We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside, and it also is published on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator on the wall on the back of these legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in which is under God, the principle of liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we will begin. We're going to move to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and do our recognition and proclamations first. So if we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. And I'm going to do Item B first. It's a resolution honoring the extraordinary life of Senator James Jim Jensen. And I would ask that his family members just come up around the podium here, and I'll read the resolution. Good morning. Whereas James H. Jim Jensen was born on January 17, 1934, and died on October 11, 2023, at the age of 89. And whereas Jim Jensen was raised on a farm outside of Kennard, Nebraska, the youngest of five children born to Leonard and Myrtle Jensen. And whereas his family moved to 1616 Pinkney in Omaha in 1942. And Jim attended Omaha Technical High School, where he met his wife Joan, at a football game. And whereas the couple dated throughout high school and married February 8, 1959. And whereas Jim enjoyed a successful career in residential construction and development, building over 150 homes and developing the West Acres subdivision and over 200 acres of commercial land that is now the Old Mill Office Park. And whereas after retiring from development, Jim represented District 20 as a Nebraska State Senator for 12 years, serving as Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee. And whereas Jim was also a part owner and 30-year board member of the First West Roads Bank in Omaha. He was also appointed to the City of Omaha Zoning Board of Appeals and was elected to the Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District Board. And whereas Jim loved gardening, camping, boating, fishing, and building. But his greatest love was his wife and his family, including his grandchildren and great-grandchildren, his children and grandchildren. And now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby expresses its sincere condolences to the family of Senator James Jim Jensen on his recent passing after an extraordinary life, dated this 31st day of October 2023. Ask for a motion to approve. A motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the resolution. I had the honor of working with Jim in the legislature for many years, and he was always a professional and a gentleman and a great public servant. And I know that his family was his pride and joy because he talked about you all the time. And we shared some common interests in the outdoors, and we would trade camping stories from time to time. So I've heard things about a few of you, going camping with Dad. He was a good man and a great citizen, and you should be very proud of him because he was very proud of you. So I just wanted to put that in the record. It was my great honor to have worked with him. Thanks for coming here today.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I could consider Jim a friend. I wanted to tell you a story. I think you'd enjoy it. I've served with him for four years, and he was Chair of the, for anybody that doesn't know, he was Chair for a certain period of time of the Health and Human Services Committee. And I got to know Jim really well, and I made the mistake. A bill came out to the floor out of his committee. It wasn't his bill, but it came out to the floor, and he, of course, approved that. And I was doing like a 20-minute tap dance on this bill. And I didn't know, he was probably doing a slow burn. So after we got done with the tap dance, I think the bill passed. After we got done with the tap dance, I walked over to Jim's desk, and I started asking him questions, and he didn't say a word. He just looked at me. And I go, I think I'm in trouble. I felt like I was looking at my dad. So I didn't say a word. I walked away, and I said, I think I'll talk to Jim later. He was a very, other than that, he was very, very kind to me, and he taught me a lot. And I'll miss him.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, thanks, all the family for being here, and thanks to Jim for what he taught me. I served on the home builders' board with he and Pat Jacobs back 50 years ago. And what a special person. And I know I was there home when Governor Teeman was running many years ago on about 115th Street, south of the Pacific, closer to center in the old days. And he and Pat Jacobs were quite the pair and did an unbelievable job in building our community. And I just want to thank you all, and he will be missed. He is a really, not a good person, but a great person. And Joan, you were his bodyguard and everything else. So thank you for what you contribute. Appreciate the family.
Would you all like to say a few words?
I could say something quick. I was up in Blair yesterday, matter of fact, and had a chance to drive through Kennard on my way home. And it reminded me, Dad actually rode a horse to school, a one-room schoolhouse, with his two sisters on the front of the horse. So there were three of them. And from those very humble, meager start, you know, he started his career, moved to Omaha, as you read. And but one thing I appreciate, and I think I'll always carry with me, is he had a real servant's heart and a desire to steward whatever he was involved with, whether it was building homes, commercial development, whatever that was, eventually in the state legislature. But he always cared about and wanted to steward the folks that were under his care. A number of people at his funeral came up to me and said, because of your dad, I started a business. I was working for him building houses on his crew, and he said, you have a talent for this. You need to paint houses and go do that. The guy started a painting business. Another guy started a cabinet business. And that was throughout his life. He just had this great need to be a steward and to take care of the people underneath his care. And so the encouragement I took out of that, one other quick story is at the funeral, a gentleman came up and said, I felt called to go into the ministry, but because of a checkered past and some things I'd done in my background four times, I was rejected from pursuing that. And he said, your dad got involved, wrote some letters, did some things to help me out. And he said, I was questioning whether this calling into the ministry was what I should have done or not done. He said, your dad helped clear the way, and he's full-time in the ministry right now. Those kinds of things, and that kind of a lesson of stewardship and care for the people underneath him is what really struck me and has always impressed me, something I want to carry forward with and live, and I know the rest of the family does as well. And my encouragement to you all, as you have a stewardship role with the county, is that you continue to do that and serve well. Take care of those people, not just those that might be able to help you out down the road, but those that, you know, will never be able to repay you other than to come up perhaps at your funeral and say thank you to the family. And I had multiple people do that when we laid Dad to rest. And my encouragement to everybody here would carry on that legacy. Serve people that are underneath your care and take care of them well. So, thank you, on behalf of the family.
Thank you. And would you just, you want to introduce the members of your family with us here today?
Run up. Okay. Clara and my brother Jay, Steve Curtis, who I think most of you know. The son-in-law. And my sister Jill is Steve's husband, or wife, my mother Joan, and then my wife Pam, and Anna, one of Joel's, my brother Joel's daughter, and she works for the city. And then my brother Jeff. And Jeff and his wife Kathy live in Lincoln. So, and we're missing Joel. So there was four boys, one girl.
Well, we appreciate you all being here. And again, on behalf of the board, we send our sympathies for the passing of your dad. And I too had the great honor of working with him while he was in the legislature and on the Health and Human Services Committee. That actually is a deep passion of mine as well. So we shared that and worked well on a lot of health and human service issues. And so when he left, he still stayed involved, though. And we used to see him and Joan at many, many meetings. And so he will be missed in the state of Nebraska as well, in Douglas County. So we thank you for sharing him with us. And he will always be remembered. And what a great message that you sent today, especially given our statutory obligation, is to take care of the poor and the indigent, those that can't take care of themselves. So that was a very, very good message today. So we thank you for that. And if you could all just, did we vote yet? Okay, please vote. And then as you leave, can you just come up? And I'll give you a resolution, and all the board members would like to shake your hands.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And we will go ahead and do the also, the other resolution, which is observing the Operation Green Light in honor of our nation's veterans. And I would ask our Veteran Service Officer, who I saw he was here, oh, there he is, Benson, to come on down. And before we do that, are there, do we have any veterans in the audience? And if so, would you please stand? Thank you. Thank you for your service. With that, I will read the resolution quickly, and then Benson will give us our highlights of what we're going to be doing this year. So whereas the residents of Douglas County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms, the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Douglas County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, the veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county Veteran Service Officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transition from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize the Operation Green Light for our veterans. And whereas the Board appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that with designation as a green light for Veterans County, this board hereby declares from November 6 through November 12 as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our former service members and the men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, this board hereby encourages its residents in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in their window of the residence or places of business, dated this 31st day of October 2023. Is there a motion to approve? And with that, Benson, do you want to give us the highlights of what we're going to be doing this year?
Sure. Yes. Benson Elmore, Director of Veteran Services. Let me first say, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I really appreciate the leadership from the county that remembers our service members and our veterans. We have a lot of veterans and service members that are dealing with mental health and physical ailments. And Operation Green Light kind of highlights and reminds us not to forget about them. And it's been my pleasure since working with the county that, to see that our leadership in the county remembers veterans and service members. And as a veteran on behalf of veterans, I say thank you for that. I'm grateful and appreciative of your leadership. Also with NACO's leadership, they really took this and put it towards the forefront, and it has garnered congressional attention. And this is pretty amazing, pretty awesome. You know, during Operation Green Light, we partner with the different businesses and organizations that they light up green and also residents as well. And we try to get out during Operation Green Light Week, which is next week, to photograph those businesses and agencies and highlight their support. We have some businesses that are returning as partners this year, and we have some new ones. And I want to highlight that real briefly. The Mall of the Riverfront is going to be illuminated November 10, and we'll get a photograph of that. The Waterford Building, Fountain Ridge Office Park, the whole week of next week, the Toward Stinson Park, the whole week. Also to the Midtown Crossing billboard will be lit up. Veridian Credit Union will be lit up for the entire week, all branches. Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge will be lit up on November 10. Also to the Centrus Federal Credit Union, all week, next week. Douglas County District Court, all week, next week. Ralston City Hall Building, Valley City Hall, and of course, our office building at Midtown Campus. Some of our new participants this year. We have Bridges Trust, we have Physicians Mutual, Union Banking Trust, Mackey Construction, Jason's Deli, the Senegal Specialty Contracting, Top Golf, the Olaf Hotel at Sarban Village, just to name a few. These individuals are really veteran-friendly. We want to highlight their support, get a photo in after Operation Green Light, show them how appreciative we are of their efforts to highlight the need for continued support for our veterans and our service members. Again, I'm truly grateful. I don't have words to express, you know, how grateful I am. And on behalf of veterans, I appreciate that. I'm all too familiar with the ailments that accompany veteran life and service member life. And so, thank you. And I'm, be quiet now before I start crying. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Not only thank you for your service, but thank you for your continued service to Douglas County. And you have done a spectacular job of, when we rolled this out last year for the first time, just listening to the names of the businesses that are now going to be involved as well is pretty amazing. And we'll just keep growing it and growing it and growing it. But it is, again, one of the things where we want to make sure that we remember our veterans every day, that this is a special week where we give them even more attention. And so I did use you, Benson, at my last NACO meeting where I challenged the other Veteran Service Officers and the counties to light up their courthouses as well. And so we'll see, I've gotten a couple of responses that they're going to do it. So we'll see if we can get all 93 at some point to light up. So, but thank you so much for what you do, for, again, not only what you did for our country, what you do for us every day in Douglas County. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please vote. Oh, no, okay. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And Benson, would you come and just shake our hands so I can give you the resolution? Thank you, Matt. Could I get a motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners and enter into the Board of Equalization? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is the agenda for...
Sorry, Madam Chair, motion passes seven to zero.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 24, 2023, and item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 7, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion, motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners, or Board of Trustees about an item not on the agenda? Board of Equalization, not on the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. At the September 12th BOE meeting, green belt status for a property at 4612 South 180th Street was discussed for about 25 minutes. It was denied by the Douglas County Assessor. The property owner appealed to this board, but you supported the denial. I think the BOE should reconsider their decision. During that discussion, a representative from the Douglas County Assessor's Office made statements that referenced Nebraska statutes. Those statements were LB 727, Section 46, amended 771344, making properties within city limits eligible for green belt status. Previously, they were not eligible. 771359, Section 1, says agriculture and horticultural land means it is primarily used for agricultural or horticultural purposes. 771359, Section 2, subsection A, says agricultural or horticultural purposes means used for commercial production of a product derived from the science of agriculture or horticulture. All those statements are true. However, I think there were other statutes that should have been considered. LB 727, Section 46, also amended 771344, by removing the requirement to provide IRS Schedule F. That form documented a profit or loss from farming. By removing that requirement, it seems the legislature said production is not necessary for green belt status. 771363 lists classes and subclasses of agricultural or, and horticultural land. Those are irrigated cropland, dry land, cop, cropland, grassland, wasteland, nurseries, feedlots, and orchards. Pictures provided by the Assessor's Office clearly showed that the parcel is either wasteland or grassland. This list is not on the green belt application, perhaps it should be. Much of the time was spent discussing agricultural production. I think in this case, the BOE was misdirected. I have two points. The BOE should reconsider their decision about green belt status for this property, much like new evidence after trial may indicate the need for a retrial. And number two, Nebraska statutes say the property tax process is supposed to be fair and equitable. I think the BOE tries to be fair and equitable. I think the new assessor will try to be fair and equitable. But how can an inexperienced property owner be expected to dispute any argument based on incomplete facts or without guidance? I think this is another example of why the entire property valuation and tax review process needs changes. Radical changes need to be, are needed to the timelines, formulas, and to the idea that agricultural and residential property taxes should be based on a percentage market value. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to respond to last week's, or the week before, Board of Equalization meeting when I was sort of giving the bum's rush by this gentleman back here. Who said I could walk my Islamophobia out of here? I want to present something to you today, I left it at my chair, that it is a document well researched and well read across the country and recently at a meeting of Dr. Mark Christians' group. That points out why I said what I did about Islamophobia, I mean, about Islam. Islam is antithetical to our Christian founding and our Christian belief, whether you want to admit it or not, but you should read about it, you should learn about it. We know recent events, that Hamas is part of the Islamic movement, and they have sworn to annihilate Israel, but also the United States, who they call the Great Satan. So therefore, I don't think I feel comfortable giving as an Islamic center or to tax exemption because they're anti-American, they're anti-freedom. I resent me paying taxes that they don't pay. And by the way, both of those centers are not particularly well kept up. I get fined if my property's not kept up, but they get tax exemptions and don't have to do that. They were maybe revalued by an assessor, but they were not inspected, were inspected. But every one of you seem to agree with what this gentleman said. And I really don't appreciate my Board of Commissioners appearing to be unknowledgeable, wrong. This is maybe out of line, you won't like it, but stupid or corrupt. I'll bring that over to you, Dan, and an audio tape from the last three meetings.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? This is the Board of Equalization.
Ed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street. I'm a taxpayer, property taxpayer there, and it keeps rising, and I'm not too unhappy about that, but I do want to point out that, uh, over at Douglas County Hospital, particularly all that mental health service that is provided over there is a real hub for the community, and so many of the patients passing through there are Medicare, Medicaid, or insured, meaning that all that service we give out over there, and we ought to think of it as a real great place for our community, it has been for 60 years or more for mental health. Whereas, on the other hand, we're going to build a jail to take care of about 60 really badly many health diagnoses, and all that money comes out of my tax money, my real estate tax money. That's not a consideration that I think has been given the weight that is due it as we go forward with such things as what do we do with that ARPA money? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Yes, good morning. My name is Alicia Sexton. My address is 1607 Laird Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68110. I am coming up to speak, excuse me, in regards to me paying taxes as a victim for the reform of juveniles. I also oppose that. I think that there should be a victim clause for equalization where we do not apply our taxes towards the rehabilitation of our, um, the people that committed the crimes against us. I don't know how you would do that, but I don't think that it's fair that me as a victim, also a homicide survivor victim, that I pay to rehab these, these juveniles. So that might be a thought for the community that has been affected by crimes, that they're not paying for rehab.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our resolutions. We have Resolutions D, E, F, G, H, I. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions D through I? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we do have one protest, a protest of CAC 23225. The background on this is the CAC was placed, placed a 2023 total value of 162,400 on 5142 Blondo Street, and the owner feels the total value should be 116,900. The Board of Referee, the Board of Equalization referee who reviewed the protest recommends maintaining the 162,400 as the property's 2023 total value, and I do believe the property owner is here today to speak to us. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Medhu Joshi, I'm the property owner, and I'm real nervous, so...
You're fine.
Okay, so first I want you to know that Mr. Ash's, Mr. Ash and Mr. Ash's office are exceptionally pleasant and helpful people in helping, helping people get up here to talk to you all, so I hope you appreciate him. And so I just want to, I, I had a very busy week last week, I wasn't able to get this letter on the agenda, so I sent it to Mr. Ash yesterday, and he said he shared it with you. So it's just, I'm just going to read it. So I said, "Good morning, under agenda item J for the Board of Equalization meeting on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, the Board of Equalization will be deciding what is the accurate valuation for my home at 5142 Blondo Street. I am Ms. Medhu Joshi, and I am the property owner, and I will do my best to show you why the correct valuation for the home is $116,900. I have never spoken in front of the BOE before, and I know I will be quite nervous about it, so please bear with me. I understand that you received a packet of information regarding my home prior to this meeting, including the latest referee evaluation. I also received this same packet of information. In addition to this letter, you should have received four attachments to this letter, three repair estimates, and one listing that was prepared by the Assessor's Office of the condition and valuation of my home over the years. The referee that I spoke with recently prior to the BOE meeting may have been a very credentialed, experienced referee. However, I, I can assure you, he did not keep an open mind regarding my rationale for valuation. When we spoke, his tone of voice and verbal demeanor and choice of verbals was pretty dismissive. He would not allow me more than 15 minutes of his time. He stated that, and I'm saying things that are not in the letter, he stated that, you know, in the big, let's see, I think it's like in March or April when the Assessor's office or whoever sends out letters saying what your valuation is for the year, and then everybody protests to the BOE, and then you hire a bunch of external assessors and everybody go, you know, that, he stated that in that process, people generally aren't given more than 15 to 20 minutes, and so there was no reason for me to be given more than that. He was unwilling for me to submit him additional pictures and repair estimates and stated that he did not need this documentation, I would not consider it. In the analysis that he sent to Mr. Ash, he did not even spell my name correctly. I do not feel he took any care in doing a truly comprehensive, thoughtful analysis or evaluation, but rather just summarily agreed with the assessor. He has cherry picked data points rather than providing a fair, objective evaluation. For example, he states that I have a new roof from 2016. A new roof from 2016 is not a new roof in 2023. And when a, when a person buys a piece of property, or, or home, they, the minimum baseline is that you have a functional roof that's not going to give out within the next 30 days. So that's not any great, that's not any great improvement or valuation. Another example, he lists, he lists some other comparable property that was sold as a fixer-upper, and he lists that that, that those were valued or sold at greater than that, but he doesn't provide any details. My home is not a fixer-upper, my home has major structural defects, which is well beyond a fixer-upper. He doesn't say what a fixer-upper means, this is a broad category. When you say a home is a fixer-upper, it could mean, to some people, it means it needs new drywall and paint, to some, you know, and a new front door.
One minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I limited?
That's why you got one minute.
Oh, okay. So it has a broad range of specifics that can affect sales prices depending on the property in question, and he provides no specifics. He states that using old data regarding a foundation that is in need of repair is hard to consider. It's not hard to consider, you can consider any data points that you need to consider to come to an accurate valuation. And so the foundation is still in need and repaired, and it is a major point of consideration up until today. He does state that there are no comparable home sales to which my home can be compared to, and I agree with that. My home is a unique situation when it comes to valuation. I'm in a neighborhood with a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, beautifully remodeled dormer homes. Mine is a two-bedroom, one-bathroom home that's in need of major repairs, it has to be sold as is, which is another variable category of, of home valuation. So I submitted repair estimates, please look at the property tax file from the Assessor's Office, they agree.
Time.
Okay, sorry.
That's, that's okay, you did great. And so what I'm going to do is have you wait for a minute and ask the Assessor's Office to come up and see if they want to add anything at this point. Yeah, you're fine, yep.
Sure. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. Yeah, we initially brought the CAC because clerically, we should have had the property categorized as poor. When we valued it at $162,000, that's taking the condition into account. And the reason I say that is because average condition homes similar to Ms. Joshi's, was it Josie or man? Okay, I wanted to get the word right. To Ms. Joshi's, are valued at about $226,000. So she provide about $40,000 bucks worth of significant repair estimates, even, you know, even taking that off of what the average value is, that 162 is in the ballpark. The other thing that Ms. Joshi hasn't mentioned was, she's made these same arguments in a Turk appeal in 2019, in which the Turk reviewed her data, reviewed our, our, our value, and left it where it was simply because the condition was built in. So I guess what I'm saying is, 162 is about the rock bottom with a poor condition that you're going to get in that neighborhood. That said, I noticed that Mr. Coder is, is on the, apparently on the, the Zoom, and so I don't know if he wants to be heard in terms of his evaluation of the property or not. But I guess all I would say is, it's, the condition is already in there, in the value we sent to you with the certified assessment correction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Mike, can you come back up? Can you clarify how, how, how the, the House is even getting a second look now since the BOE is done? is even getting a second look now since the BOE is done?
Well, what happened was we, we, I think we meant to categorize it as poor, and it didn't get properly entered into the system. And so when we valued it, uh, for 2023, it had an erroneous condition, and we can go back for things like clerical error to try and do a fix. And that's what we did here when this was brought to our attention.
So this, okay, this classified as clerical?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was what we initially did for our CAC, sure. Um, but anytime the board sets a value, there's a, there's a 30-day protest window, and that's what the taxpayers, um, follow.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to speak during this Agenda item?
Do I get to speak some more?
No. Commissioner Friend?
I, um, th- this, I don't know who this question is for. I was looking through, by the way, you, yeah, you did do a good job. Good information, and thank you for the letter or the email. Is there a current, uh, Turk filing? So there was one in 2019, but has there been another filing?
No, I, I, I'm sorry. Are you asking him or me?
Mike, do you know?
Uh, I don't believe there is. That would actually be the next step if, if the taxpayer is unsatisfied with what happens today.
Question I should know the answer to. Is it too late to file with Turk then if she wanted?
No, no. Had, had there been a, a protest in the traditional June window, the, the time to protest, uh, to appeal to Turk, a BOE decision runs out on the 10th of September.
Right.
Uh, but generally, for, for BOE determinations, there's kind of a 30-day appeal window that people have to deal with these sort of out-of-the-ordinary sorts of situations. So in, in my estimation, uh, the appeal clock would run beginning with the Turk's decision, or beginning with your decision today, one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanna clarify. So it sounds like the property was initially assessed for 200,000, and then it, the, the quality of the property was deemed poor, so that was brought down to 162,000.
Right.
And then this request is for 116,000, so.
Right, which is significantly less even than what the Turk decided it was worth for 2019.
Mm-hmm, okay, yep. So that's, and the Turk valued, just for, for the record, in 2019 said 142,000?
Right.
Correct? Okay. So we're basically going from 142 from, in 2019 to 162 today?
Over about a four-year window. That's not a typical appreciation for a lot of neighborhoods, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would ask our county attorney if we, um, for process purposes, um, the action item, if we just keep it the same, do we make, do we have to make a motion on that? Or if we change it, obviously, we would make a motion on that.
You should make a motion and vote regardless of which way the board, the board wants to go, because Mr. Goodwilly is correct. She will have an opportunity to take your decision up to Turk if she is unhappy with that, and so she'll need that decision.
Okay, thank you. And I, I do have a question for, for you, if you could come to the podium. So have you, have you, I know you did it in 2019, but do you plan, um, on going forward on, on Turk, to Turk on this one as well?
Well, um, I, I suppose so, because, um, the first thing I wanna say is I'm sure you all realize that the Turk is not an infallible body. Um, and so, um, I vehemently disagree with their 2019 determination, but that was their determination. Um, and so I suppose if you leave it at 162,400, um, I would go forward with Turk, but I know the Turk is quite behind in hearing their cases. But the other thing I wanna tell you is please take into consideration the percentages. 162,000, the Turk set my home value at 90,000 for 2009 and 2010. 162,400 is 80% higher than 2009, 2010 for a home in poor condition. The assessor's office keeps telling me that, well, home valuations, home prices are rising, home sales are rising. If you have a home in average condition in 2023, yes, it may sell for 10% more than in 2022, but a home in my condition is not gonna sell for 10% more, maybe 2% more. Even if you take a cumulative 2% increase from 2009, 2010 up to 2023, you're only at 118,750. So, you know, you, the assessor's office, God love them, they go neighborhood by neighborhood, maybe they go block by block. They do not go individual home by individual home, and they have their very sophisticated models that they do. And I'm trying to get across that you cannot use those sophisticated models for my home. It is a unique situation, and, uh, you know, they don't have the time to go home by home. That's what this protest process is about. And so, um, you, you can't do, you can't say, oh, well, and, you know, we, we went up 5% from last year. No, my home didn't. And so, um, and 40, those $40,000 in repair estimates are from like 2010. Those repairs have never been done. And for the external, um, BOE referee to say, well, I won't consider all these old repair estimates, why not? They're still valid today. It, they would be many thousands of dollars more, and it's still, it's still an issue today. It's gonna have to be sold as is. It is in poor condition. And the other thing I would say to you is that there is really no correlation between the condition that the assessor sets and the valuation. That's why I provided you that listing of the way that they have stated what the condition of the home was over the years and the valuation that they set. There isn't, there either isn't any correlation or there isn't sufficient correlation, because at one point, they raised the home, raised the condition of my home to fair, based on what? Based on nothing. It's, it's, none of those repairs have been done. It's not fair. And so i- if you take 162,400 over 144,800, which the Turk said in 2019, you're still talking about, and really, out of reasonable proportion increase for a home in poor condition in need of, in need of the entire east wall needing to be rebuilt, in need of the entire northeast corner needing to be rebricked, in need of, you know, interior, um, you know, work. So I, I, I mean, God love the assessor's office, but they, they can be kind of unreasonable, in my opinion. Anyway, okay, so what was the question?
No, you, you did great. You answered it for me.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, I guess if you leave it, I will go to the Turk, but please be aware that they're like a couple years behind.
Yep.
And so, you know, for me to get any relief. And the other thing I wanted to ask is, does the BOE have the right to go back and change previous years? They don't.
No.
Truly, they don't.
No.
The Turk does.
What does?
The Turk does.
Not unless there's an appeal that has been filed with it. So there's multiple-year appeals that are down in Turk right now, waiting, just like you said, so.
Cause in 2009, they, they did both 2008 and 2009. Or maybe it was a multiple year, I don't know.
Yeah, you, I, you'd have to, you would've had to have filed an appeal.
Okay. But anyway, they're like a couple years behind, so by the time they get to me, for me to get any relief, it would be a couple years.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've heard the testimony. What is the will of the board? Anyone? Do we have a motion to remain the same? Or do we have a motion to reduce?
Motion to remain.
Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Friend?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's a, it's, it's an old song and dance, and I'm not just saying this to make you feel better. You, you did a really good job. But the issue, there, there are a variety of ways to work through this process. The difficulty that we have as a board, and I'm not making excuses, I'm telling you that I don't think we can help you here today, in my, in my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. The reason I think that is because, and I've said this before, if I attempted, I had a, my wife and I bought our first house in 1994 over in Keystone, right on Templeton Drive. I bought that house for $58,000. I went through it, it just sold recently. I went through it, and it was in really questionable shape. That whole, that house sold for $210,000. It's 2023. Now, that's about, it's about 15 years difference of what, of what you're talking about and, and the, and the type of process that we're moving through. We're in really weird times, and one of the things that is almost guaranteed is I could go in there with a Realtor, and I don't know that I can get your house for 119. I don't know that I could. That would be, that'd be difficult. If I made that offer, you wouldn't take it. I hope you wouldn't.
On an ass is?
So, so it speaks to this, so here's my point. It speaks to the subjective nature of our constitutional directive, our constitutional directive, and our statutory tax codes. We have to follow those. The assessor has to follow them. There's nothing they can do. And what that means is assessors are forced, they're absolutely mandated, to go in and apply projected market value. They have to factor that in to factor the assessed value of the property. So if I went out to Zillow right now, I'm guessing, or I went out to Realtor.com or whatever, my guess would be your, your house would be in the range, like many houses around your neighborhood, in the 170 to $200,000 range. They're factoring some of that stuff into this in order to find the valuation that statutory law and constitutional directive mandate them to do. My, you could take my advice, or you could tell me to go pound sand, you could do whatever you want. I think you go to Turk, I think you make your case again, because I don't know what'll happen, but maybe things will change at that point, and they'll go, well, yeah, you're absolutely right. I, I just don't know if we have the type of capability to give you what you need today. I, I, I don't know if we have that capability. So the reason I hesitated is I'm like, man, I'd sure like to help you. Just like I'd like to help about 2, 2,000 people that could walk in here right now and say, why did I get a 40 or 50% increase? I'd love to help them. I got a 25% increase. Somebody asked me, are you gonna protest it? I go, no way, because my fellow commissioners would go, hey, you need to pay that. Um, no, I, we are in really, really weird times, and you're right in the midst of it. So next year, who knows? But I guess, take my advice, don't take it. I, I think that there is a process, and I think Turk is, it takes a while, but I think it is an approach. So I, I would vote to keep it at 162,400, and I, uh, Madam Chair, thank you for the, for the time.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, and I, I couldn't have said it better than my, my colleague. The, the bottom line is we all know this process is unfair. We all know that there's, uh, that proper's, properties feel overvalued. Most of us, our taxes went up significantly. We, we all know that. The, I think the hardest part for me to understand is, uh, and we're trying to address it, is that this comes by state statute. State statute currently states that we have to value or pay, uh, assess taxes at about 90% of the assessed value, but the assessed value is, that's the subjective part. Um, and, and then the hard part, because everybody's property valuations went up, even though yours is, uh, an as-is condition or poor condition, it still went up. And so as, as much as we hate to, to admit it, that, you know, the, it affects every, everybody in, in equal, unequally, even though it's the Board of Equalization, but the bottom line is pretty much everybody's went up by a significant amount because of that state statute. So I know our new county assessor is working with state senators to try to get some of those laws changed, and that's where we need to do our part. But the hard part means we, that means for today, because the law says that, we have to follow the law. And, and that's why, why I, I feel like we have to vote the way we're gonna vote today. Turk is an option, but that's not a great option either. You alluded to it. It takes two or three years to get information back from them. That is a, the, the, it's just a terrible system. So, and the way to fix that is really from the ground up, and that's starting in the state legislature, so we can get the laws to us to kinda tell us how to, how to withhold those laws. So, so I, it's, it's awful, it stinks, there's lots of people in the same boat. I think our hands are a little bit tied by that state statute and just the way the, the market is right now and the, the subj- subjective nature of how, how things are, are valued to a degree. There's a lot of objectivity, but, but a certain part is subjective. So, so, similarly, I'm sorry that you're in this, this boat, but, and we completely understand. We feel our hands are a little bit tied, but we're trying to do things behind the scenes with the state legislature and with our county assessor to kinda get things to change. This, this was brought up by Mr. Seibert, actually, who spoke during the comment section. He mentioned that the, you know, the property tax is a percent of market value, and that goes down to what our state statute says. And he hit the nail on the head on what's, what's wrong with that, that system, so.
Well, that's good information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, I think, uh, much has been said correctly. One thing, Mr. Goodwilly, I think we're past the deadline. I'm almost certain of that, but I stand to be corrected, on filing at Turk. I think you have to do it by a certain date, I believe.
No, well, it depends on what the appeal is about. If this, if this had been a protest that was filed in the protest window in June, like normal, and the property values, the protests had been determined by this board in early August, like it always does, that window expires September 10th.
Right.
But on this kind of a, a protest, sort of after the fact and out of the norm, there's, there's a 30-day tail on a county board decision for Turk appeals.
So she could still.
She's got a 30-day window from, I think, probably your decision date.
All right. And then you correct me. If you do file, let's say someone met that deadline or did file with Turk, then you have the ability to meet with the assessor and discuss why and show him pictures. It should be reduced, and then he can make that decision. And if I stated something incorrectly, please correct it.
The, a Turk appeal keeps the case alive, and in most instances, our appraiser staff ha- appraisal staff will have a discussion with the, the property owner to see if there's someplace to be on this.
So that is open to you?
Now, now, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna stand here and promise that's, that's gonna happen, that there's gonna be a reasonable sort of compromise number.
Right.
I'm just saying that the window is open for that.
Yes. That doesn't mean you're gonna have success, but we do have a new assessor that I think earnestly, uh, works to have fairness and listening and trying to have that value between that 92 and 100%, which the state statute requires at this time.
Who is it?
Okay, just a second. Just a minute. Just a minute.
If she wants to ask me something, I'm fine. If she wants to ask me something, I'm fine. I'm done.
Can you come to the podium?
Oh, yeah. I, I guess I'm behind the times. I didn't know we had a new assessor. Who is it?
I'm sorry?
We have a new assessor?
Walt Pfeffer.
He just started, was sworn in in January of this year.
Isn't that the old assessor?
No, just the new one.
He may be old like me, but he is new to the assessor job.
Because who was before Diane Barriato?
Roger Morrissey.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, I'm sorry, I am behind the times. Okay. And then, so then if I file, if I have the 30 days to file with the Turk, do I contact the Turk, or?
Mike can help you. Mike Goodwilly can help you.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your letter.
And thanks for explaining your rationale. It does help.
Thank you for being here with us. You did good. Anyone else wanting to speak on this agenda item?
Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street. I looked through the documentation online before I came to the meeting today, and I noticed something on the land value portion of this. Everybody knows it's, if you look at your records, you'll see a land portion and an improvement portion, and everybody's been discussing the improvement portion. If you look at the history of the land, it went from $10,000 to $40,000. Four-fold increase in one year, and if I remember right, the property was about 7,000 square feet, which is over six bucks a foot. I have never understood how you could take, how you come up with those land values, because if you equate that to an acre, you, I, there's no way I'm gonna believe that an acre of ground is worth over $240,000. I think what you could do is you could at least cut the land portion of the value in half, even though it's still probably too high. It is something you might be able to do. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I live not very far from you, ma'am. Have you seen what the sale price of the house just up the street from you was?
If you're talking about...
Larry, make your comments.
Well, she's gonna have a real shock when she gets appraised according to that similar property in a similar neighborhood concept. I don't think so. I did the Turk thing, and I don't think the word's ability to meet with the assessor is correct. We have the right to meet with the assessor, okay? The whole process needs to be done, and I expect you people to go to that, all those organizations you go to, listen to for best practices, and you pay dues to, to lobby for us. I am on the agenda, Mary Ann, don't do that.
No, you're not.
I have a right to say this. I expect you to go down and lobby for us, not some organization. The state law needs to get changed, it's your responsibility to do that for me. Don't interrupt me, I'm not through. Don't blame it on them. You need to go down there and lobby them, not the National Association of Counties, because they're lobbying for themselves, and they're lobbying for you against me. Stop interrupting me.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second? Please vote.
Madam Chair, do we want to include adjournment?
And adjournment, yes.
Okay. So just to reiterate, this is to dismiss the protest and maintain the value at 162,400 and adjourn. Commissioner Rogers? Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now go back into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Do I have a motion to reconvene as a Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. And Dan, just for the record, would you do a roll call real quick?
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair?
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processor Tuesday, October 31st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the consent agenda, items A through N. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan?
I'd like to remove item B for discussion that was laid over for, since last Tuesday.
So the motion would be to remove item, is that just a friendly amendment to the, so the consent agenda would go A through N minus B? Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No, I took him there.
So, let's vote on the items A through N minus B?
Motion passes seven to zero.
And now we'll go back to item B, resolution approving the contract with Carlson West Provanda Architects for Design Services and Contract Administration for the Douglas County Corrections Mental Health Facility. Is there a motion to approve?
Well, I'd like to discuss that item.
Right, I need a motion and a second to start discussion.
Okay, I'd move to have discussion on item B.
Second?
Yes.
It's, well, I need a, is there a motion? It's to, not necessarily to discuss, is there a motion to approve the item? We can amend the motion, but just to start discussion, do we have a motion to approve item B?
I'd move that we delay beginning and have some discussion about it.
So, so your motion is to lay over item B? Okay, there's a motion to lay over item B?
But we would have discussion today.
Go ahead and discuss.
Do we need to have a vote, or no? We're okay?
We, none, before we discuss.
First, I want to thank four commissioners last week for giving the opportunity to lay it over, because Commissioner Friend and Commissioner Boyle were not here, and we're talking about an item that could be in the $30 million-plus range, and that was concerning, and I think all seven of us should be here. I also am not sure that it should have been on consent necessarily because of discussion. We just talked about the assessor's office a little bit. The governor personally has 32 members serving to do something about property taxes, a reduction, and looking at that in a most serious way, and I think in the next legislative session, there will be much discussion in that regard, which could affect us. And I think we have to be cautious on our spending, and we heard earlier in this meeting some of the needs and pictures of the hospital and delayed deferred maintenance in asbestos, windows, plumbing, et cetera. I've done some work, even in the last week, to look at costs for buildings, and I mentioned that $1,000 a square foot for this 30,000-foot structure. And the last buildings built by UNMC out of Village Point that have much more detail and examining rooms and some rooms where they can also do some anesthesia and some other things, those buildings are costing somewhere, that were built in the last couple of years, around $600 a square foot. And, and they have someone that develops, helps them manage that project, and the fees aren't somewhere around $2.5 million to do that, which is what we'd be approving today to move forward with this contract. The other thing is, when you build something, or you're planning to build, you want to look at what the numbers are gonna be to operate that facility. None of us on this board, to my knowledge, and I've talked to some of the members, have seen that, those numbers in 2026, '07, when it's done. And I have asked, I don't mean to put our finance director on the spot, but I don't think she has seen numbers of that operation. We currently use WellPath for the operation at our corrections, and we've had discussion that we're probably gonna put it out for bids. And if we are, it seems like whoever's gonna operate that 30,000-foot, 86-bed facility at our correction, which is a good step to help in the mental health area, which is very important, they should probably be more involved in seeing the design and the efficiency of it. Otherwise, we're just building it, and we don't have in there what the cost is for furnishings and other things in that $30 million. I don't want someone to come in and say, you know, I wish we'd been involved in the design because it's somewhat inefficient. And we had a story in the Wall Street Journal in the last, this last weekend, talking about home values are still declining in the United States of America in many, many places. That has an effect on us. I want to be cautious, because I, for one, can say it on record, and I said it when I was running a year ago, that I said something that I haven't said when I'm campaigning for office, and that is, I will not vote during this term to raise the mill levy, period. And we need to be very, very cautious. There's nine-story buildings being built right now in our city with large cranes that are costing under $500, that are concrete and steel with parking underneath them. For us to look at this and say, it might be $30 million, a $1,000 a foot, we need to slow down and bring some other people in and look at this carefully, and I think we can do something more efficient at less cost, and I think there's others to be talked to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And I really appreciate the comments that my colleague Commissioner Morgan just made, because a year ago, I engaged in conversations regarding this specific idea, among others, for expanding our capacity to provide mental health services to inmate population at Douglas County Correction Center. And some of the same people that are on this resolution were there, and at that time, I asked the architect that we're discussing here today for a ballpark figure of what this facility would look like. And it came in around the number that Commissioner Morgan is just talking about. If you do 600 a square foot for a $30,000 building, it's $18 million, not $30 million, not $30-plus million, it's $18 million. And that was the ballpark that we talked about a year ago. Well, you know, I've seen this bracket creep happen on other projects, and we're gonna talk about one here later today involving the youth center and the kids jail, and it's something that I'm not going to support. Commissioner Morgan makes some excellent points, a couple, and I share this, not voting for mill levy increase, which is something I can get behind, and slow down and bring others in for efficiencies and make the cost less. This thing comes in, the, the fee for this portion of it is $3.7 million, I think, and it's predicated on a $30 million-plus project cost. That's without any staffing. We're gonna have this discussion later here today, because we're coming back for a rear end staffing request for the kids jail, which is vacant over cost, over, over time, over budget, and hasn't had any staff yet, and we didn't have that discussion going forward despite, you know, vigorous requests by me and others, because the cost of the construction isn't anywhere near the whole cost of what you're doing. You know, I learned this years ago, buying a horse, cheapest thing was buying the horse. Expensive thing, taking care of the horse over time. Cheapest thing here is building the building, and it should be as reasonable as we can. The expensive part of that is running the building, that's staffing, that's, you know, all of the things that go into a very, very expensive operation when you're dealing with an estimated 76-bed, basically, mental health hospital. It's gonna be a costly item. It's not gonna be run with current staff. Anymore than the kids jail that we'll talk about in a bit is gonna be run with the current staff of Douglas County Youth Center. It's gonna be a costly item, and none of those things were discussed when we went into the construction of the ill-advised kids jail expansion. They need to be discussed upfront on this one. We can't afford to make the same mistake, because that one did cost a property tax increase. And this one, I join with Commissioner Morgan in saying, we don't need a property tax increase. If we do this right, we've had other proposals to look at existing facilities that we can use inside the correction center, like we should have used the existing youth center on the, on the kids jail thing, to bring down this cost from the estimated $30 million to what it appears, and I defer to my colleague, Commissioner Morgan's expertise in real estate and development, to be a much more modest $600 a square foot, $18 million number. We don't have to do this today, and if we do what Commissioner Morgan is expressing, we don't lose anything, and we possibly gain millions and millions and millions of dollars in savings on this front end, and we don't have a staffing estimate on this jail expansion. We need that before we go forward, and I think we definitely need to have a definitive answer on the liability that we're going to expose ourselves to from a jail expansion using ARPA financing. We've had some legal expertise that have warned us that this is a dangerous way to finance this operation, and I, I would urge my colleagues to tread very lightly.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the Corrections Mental Health capacity that we've been dealing with for quite a while is a process, and right now, we're, right now, we're arguing, on this particular item, we're arguing semantics. We're arguing, and, and the semantics relate to big picture, where are we gonna go, but also on the agenda, its initial phase. Today, we're approving it, today, this particular agenda item is a resolution approving a contract with Carlson West Provanda Architects for Design Services and Contract Administration for Douglas County Corrections Mental Health Renovation or Addition. So, it's just a piece of that process, and what I mean by that is, what I'm getting at is, we, months ago, we earmarked, and by the way, I'm not gonna insult people's intelligence here, I hope, earmarking money, earmarking a certain amount of money is different than committing it and spending it. The resolution essentially took, by the way, a resolution that passed five to two, to separate, to not do community mental health capacity downtown, but to advance Corrections Mental Health projections and a project going forward. Five to two, this pass, that resolution. So in other words, we earmarked $33 million to take care of this process. This particular item on this agenda is part of the process. I don't think in this process, it's important, it is important to have a business plan, it is important to understand operational functionality, it is, it is important to know how many more people Corrections is gonna need to actually run this facility, and what type of contracts we're gonna have in place to deal with this, with this capacity. After we receive, we can do all that. After we receive a business plan, after we receive an understanding of what all this means, the earmark of $33 million could change. We, we could say, you know what, we're not committing $33 million, we just, we just set that aside, we earmarked it. We're gonna spend $25 million, or we're gonna spend $20 million, or we're gonna spend 15. What we do here today at this very moment doesn't mean we can't change that earmark, to the best of my knowledge. Somebody tell me, I don't have that statutory authority, I'll go, well, let's discuss that, because the last time I looked, we approved to earmark $33 million of a five-to-two vote to deal with this particular subject matter. Right now, this particular piece... Right now, this particular piece that Commissioner Morgan is talking about is what we're dealing with specifically today, and how much do we want to spend? So here's the choice we have. This is part of the process as follows. I don't know that it matters. If we want another, this went out to RFP. We asked for people, we said, hey, whoa, 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 come, tell us how much it's going to cost to actually put these, the architectural stuff together to do this. And it's, what, 2.1 million? Now, Commissioner Morgan makes a valid point, that seems high. And maybe we could address that again, but if we, if we don't pass this, we're going to send this out to RFP again. Are we going to get anybody to follow up? I mean, how do we do that? Do we, do we go out to Facebook, or do we go out to Instagram and say, hey, by the way, you want to make some money? I don't know what to do at this point. What I can tell you is, if we pass this, it doesn't mean we're spending $33 million. By the way, over my cold, dead political body, will we spend $33 million blindly? We will not do that. I will take the amount of time Chair allows me to go, we're going down the wrong path here in this process. I don't think this particular item says we're going down the wrong path. Now, Commissioner Morgan makes a good point, is 2.1, what's the number? Is it, I don't have the number here, which is a little concerning, and I'd have to go into the, I think it's 2.1 million. Is that too much? If it is, let's, let's go out to another RFP, I'll let the board decide. But let's not make a decision right now, here's my point. Let's not make a decision right now, here today, that we're going to say, you know what?
Time. Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I think it's north of $3 million, actually. And we had some discussion on this last week with the public property people. You know, we have the opportunity here to take a deep breath before we do a deep dive into a very deep pool that's going to cause us some significant exposure to what looks like a 30 million-plus liability. The architectural contract, and I think it was 3.2.3 million, I'm sorry, is 7.7% of the total. And the total appears to be, on page three, $30,700,000. And if the total goes up, the amount goes up. And I don't know if the total goes down and the amount goes down. The point is, this contract is for a 30-plus million-dollar project. And we're flying by the seat of our pants, again, and if we don't learn from our mistakes, we're bound to repeat them, when we should be taking the advice of my learned colleague, Commissioner Morgan, and including some people in who know what they are doing when it comes to building health facilities. And if we can bring that cost down to what appears to be, you know, kind of an average of 600 a square foot, well, you bring that cost down to $18 million. And that's a good thing. Doesn't get us around the fact that we're financing this with ARPA monies that are specifically restricted and not supposed to be used for jail expansion. This item on our agenda calls for a corrections addition. That's jail expansion. That's danger, danger, danger. And I think that we should take a deep breath before we go further. We have nothing to lose and everything to gain by, you know, doing our due diligence on this before we go forward. The population that we're dealing with has an average length of stay, according to the corrections director, what he told me, of 21 days. We're not dealing with long-term mental health issues here. We're dealing with people who are in and out our correction center on an average of 21 days. You're not going to do anybody a big life turnaround in 21 days. The average for inpatient drug and alcohol treatment is 30 days, so you're not even going to be able to do that. And that's a huge portion of our population. So what we need to do is talk about what we're going to do, include some possible partners. I've had contacts with people who have reached out to me from governmental units like Sarpy County, from healthcare providers around the community that are in the mental health business, saying, we'd love to collaborate with you on this and other projects on our healthcare campus on 42nd Street. Please include us in those discussions. And I'm hearing what Commissioner Morgan is saying, let's include them in these discussions. We have nothing to lose and everything to gain by doing that. And we should be instructed by the example that we'll go into in some detail later that we're dealing with now, with a project that didn't include costs of staffing upfront, that didn't include capacity issues upfront. It's going to get very, very pricey on that project. And not repeating that mistake gives us the opportunity to not repeat the property tax increase that came along with that project. I'm with Commissioner Morgan. I am not going to raise the mill levy to pay for this project. I think that we need some answers to some questions. And I would be open to my colleagues' ideas on, on how we do this going forward so that we can get this under control and get the best result possible. And have some of these ARPA funds left over to do what we should be doing, which is upgrading 42nd Street, as we heard today at the Board of Trustees meeting, to make our capacity to serve the population of Douglas County who pay taxes and don't go to jail, but have mental health disabilities. Disabilities are, disability services are a right. And we should deal with the people who have disabilities in the mental area the same way that we deal with disabilities in the physical area.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a, there's two, there's, there's really, it's pretty simple, there's really two ways politicians operate. I'm not saying the first is what's happening here, but you, you take specific, and it's happened over and over again, all the way back to George Washington. You take specific items, you want to communicate and convince people of your thought process. You take specific items, you group them into one, and you create as much white noise as possible. And then you get folks in the community to say, boy, that sounds great. You guys are on the right path. You convolute the issue. It happens in Washington, it happens here, it happens in the Nebraska Legislature. You make it as confusing as possible. And then you get people go, well, you're making a mistake. We don't have all the information, we don't have the results. No mill levy increases, no general fund money coming out of this. I don't have a business plan, I don't know what the operational costs are. All true. But guess what? I'm going to, I'm going to get all that. Nothing we do, so let's cut through, let's cut through all the white noise and all the stuff that actually happens in politics. What are we doing here today? What are we doing? It's very specific. We're not spending $33 million. What, we have two choices right now. We either go with the RFP, this went out to RFP. We asked people, hey, come in and bid on this. And Carlson Provanda West won this, this effort. It cost X, it cost two, well, I'll go with Commissioner Kavanaugh's number, it cost $3 million. We have two choices. We either go with that today, which reduces the amount that we actually have to spend that's earmarked at the end of the day to actually deal with this project, unless we change the project later on via resolution. We, we're short that amount of money. And then we have to decide where's the rest going to get spent, based on the business plan, based on the operational costs, all of the stuff that we have to deal with. But again, we have two choices today. We either do it, or we send it back out to RFP again and ask folks, get involved. We think this is too expensive. I agree with Commissioner Morgan, maybe it is. But we have two specific choices today. It's not to decide whether or not we want, whether we want Corrections Mental Health. We made that decision five to two, that we're going to do that. Now, if we don't want to do it, we better come in with another resolution and say, we're not going to do that. So everybody can come in here and start talking all kinds of smack, but unless we're going to change that with a resolution, we've earmarked that 33 million. It's done. That's not general funding, that's ARPA money. Let's talk about that. Let's come back later on and talk about another resolution, fine with me. But that's not what we're specifically talking about today. I'm not mad, I'm just saying, let's focus on the specific item. Do we want to spend this money right now based on an RFP that we sent out to everybody, or do we want to go back to RFP? I don't care, you want to delay it another two, three weeks? Fine. I don't know what the will of the board is, and Commissioner Morgan made a pretty decent argument for it. Maybe it's too expensive. I'm saying it already went out to RFP. The final point, the final point is, let's keep our eye on what we're focusing, focusing on at this very moment. And if we decide that we are not, that we do not want that $33 million earmark anymore, this board has to come back together with a resolution, and it has to say to all of us and to the folks out there, we are not going to take this money and do this. That's not what we're doing here today. Everything else, everything else is, what's the old term? Coffee house, smokehouse, coffee house, white noise. Right now, we have a specific item. Yea or nay, we're going to spend the money to actually try to figure out, after the RFP, whether we're going to try to figure out the architectural drawings and get this stuff done. Then we start having even more vigorous debates. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. Regarding the specific item, I have a couple of quick questions for Jeff, but then I'll have a couple of questions for Mike Myers as well. As far as the RFP process, we talked about it at last week's meeting. And one thing that I recall that maybe is of slight concern to me is that only one person applied for the RFP, being Provanda, right?
That's correct.
And so I'm curious if, why, why that might be, that we only got one RFP. I'm also curious if there's any intentional proactive efforts we could do, either for this or moving forward, or both, to ensure that we get at least two RFPs when we go to RFP. But this is your expertise area, not mine, so I'm going to inquire with you.
Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. We sent out the RFP, and we did only receive one. The word on the street was everyone else was busy. And the process that we've been following, we've done that hundreds of times. In my mind, we did everything correct. We had three programming sessions for this facility. We had four town hall meetings for this facility. The board gave direction to move forward with the Correction Center Mental Health. And on the 29th, the AE selection committee recommended Carlson West Provanda. So that's why we're here today, to move forward with the design, construction costs. I can have Al with Carlson West is here, he can address that. They've been doing these facilities for the state of Nebraska and elsewhere. And when we talk about the $1,000 a square foot, that's based on the $30,000, $30,000 square foot target. We're more like 37,000 square feet with all the mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, maintenance chases, things like that. So if you consider 37,000 square feet, we're about $830 a square foot.
And your experience is a 7.7 charge to the project for design average?
Correct. That's negotiated between Public Properties and Carlson West Provanda. When the RFPs come in, it's based off of qualifications. There's no discussion on price at that point.
What have been the percentages for like other similar RFPs in recent history?
They've been anywhere from, well, in the past, 7.2 all the way to 9. So we felt comfortable with the 7.75.
Hypothetically, can we, if the board went in that direction hypothetically, reopen the RFP just to see if there was other bidders that wanted to get in the game, so to speak, for this project and see what they came in at? And do you think with more time, you said, it sounded like people were busy this season, with more time, would they, you know, likely apply, do you think?
Well, everything is based on performance, past history, what the company has. Yeah, you could, but I, in my mind, we did due diligence, and we need to move forward on this project if we're going to get it completed in time. The design process is months, I mean, short of a year to get this thing designed, so.
Yeah. And I only ask, this is nothing against Provanda or the committee, I think the committee did a good job. It's just, you know, when we hear that, you know, we don't have comparables, this might be too high, you know, it's just, it would be ideally nice to have a comparable, you know, if we would have gotten a second or third bid. So that's the only reason why I ask.
But that comparable is negotiated.
Sure.
So we could end up same spot.
Got it.
Or higher.
Yeah.
Maybe a little lower, but I feel we're, we're fair and reasonable at this point.
Yeah. And like I said, this is your, your area expertise, I appreciate that insight you're providing. I'm going to loop back around later to my questions for Mike. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I could let Commissioner Garcia finish if you'd like with Mike Meyer. I'm not trying to stop this project, that's, we've talked about that, and then that was a five-to-two vote. What I'm trying to do is make certain of a couple of things. One is that we can afford it after it's built. No one has seen numbers, none of the commissioners have really seen the numbers of what is it going to cost to operate this facility? And I think that ought to be something that we should have discussion about. We also have to furnish it. We don't have the beds and all the things that go into it, I don't think that's in the proposal.
That's in the 34 million.
Every, all the furnishings for this.
Correct, yes.
And yet, we don't know who's going to operate it at this point in time, in my opinion. Because we talked about going out to get a national bidder. And what I'd like to see us do, and I'm not certain what the rush is always on this matter, I want to see that cost, and when I give you some numbers of what's been built at Village Point, and you can look at those buildings, and they're unbelievable that UNMC's moved into them. At $600 a square foot, and they weren't built five years ago, they're built now, and there's other buildings under construction right now that are probably 30% finished, that are under 500, steel, concrete, five, nine-story buildings in our community. And I've talked to several developers. And my feeling is, I may be able to bring a developer in here that's been involved in some of those, or maybe two, for that matter, that could look at it and talk about it. But at the same time, I still want to see what the operational cost looks like for the future. Because this board is going to pay, face, and I'm saying it, and you can mark this down, Chris, we don't know what our costs are going to be for the sheriff and additional people, and our county attorney, public defender, and those are only going to increase over the next two, three years. Because we know we're facing some serious hiring situations. And I hope that we'll be able to staff this, and that's a concern. UNMC probably has over 400 openings right now in hiring. Children's is going to be hiring people in their mental health area. And I want to be cautious about that. And that's why, if we know who's going to operate it... And that's why if we know who's going to operate it, I'll be asking them those questions. I try not to talk too much on the board, but when we're spending 30 million, or 27 million or 33, I want to be careful that I know I can operate it. I'm not going to build an apartment building, an office building, and not know what kind of rents I need to get in order to afford to operate it. And I want to see those expenses. I think it's just prudent to do that. And that's where I'm coming from, and I think if we say, "Hey, let's put this on a, a little bit of a delay and see if there's some other people we might be able to bring in to assist us." And also during that delay, can we see on paper what that operation is going to cost in 2026? Because that's about when it would open. And that's so important to see that. And are we going to be able to hire that staff to work at 17th and Leavenworth to operate that 86-bed facility? So, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not trying to stop this. I think mental health is so important, but if we can do it for less, then I'm going to have money for some of the men and women who were sleeping and slept in our city last night outside at 77th and Cass, or 137th and Q, or at 92nd Center. That's what we could use some ARPA money for with partnering with some of the homeless shelters to assist in that regard. And that's where I'm coming from, and I'm sorry for, you know, my comments.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. I think there are, these questions will be more for Mike Myers. Touching on the, the operations that we expect to occur in the scenario where this extension is built for the mental health beds. It's possible we haven't gotten things on paper, but I know verbally, you've mentioned that, I think if I'm recalling correctly, that you expect a hiring of initially eight additional officers that after the full transition occurs into the new beds and whatnot, could be potentially reduced. Is that around the estimate?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia, and to all the commissioners, on April 4th of this year, there was a meeting up on the ninth floor where we presented the proposal, and on page 30 of that proposal, it does have our operational costs for 2026. Those are an additional cost of $752,540. We estimate there's going to be about 24 staff that work in the new mental health addition. However, the majority of those, over the course of time, our mental health acuity has, the scope of that has grown so significantly. We used to have one housing unit that we staffed with two officers. Now, there are six or seven housing units that are staffed with two officers during all waking hours. If, if we can take our most mentally ill, most high-acuity individuals and pull them out of those six or seven housing units, I can repurpose those staff that have, where we've gone to double staffing in those units, because those units will be safer and easier to manage, and pull those back to single, single-staffed housing units, single officer-staffed housing units. So, well over half of the staff that it's going to take to operate the new facility are, are already working for us. They would be moved from their current post into the, into the new addition.
And what will be the mix between Well Path, our contractor for current mental health services in the Corrections Center, and new officers? What does the extension look like between Well Path and officers?
So, I'll, without using a vendor's name, I'll answer that question. I don't really anticipate a significant change in the operation, in the cost of that contract that are related directly to this project. The cost of healthcare may go up, and I'll be quite straightforward with you. They are going to go up, whether you do this project or not. We're going to have this approximately the same amount of mentally ill individuals in custody, whether you do this project or don't do this project. And so, the, the cost to deliver that care is going to be essentially the same. This project allows us to do it in a more humane, more therapeutic, hopefully. And there's a lot of other, I'm going to come up and speak when you guys are, are done. But there's a lot of other avenues that are some advantages and some, and more offsetting cost savings that I will explain, you know, when I come back. But I don't anticipate that this project in itself will significantly alter the, the nature of our contract with any medical provider in the future.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate that, Mike. And I have a quick follow-up with, I think, Jeff, possibly Pavandra, but maybe just Jeff. So, the RFP right now that's on the agenda for design, in relation to cost concerns, per square footage, et cetera, can any of those concerns be addressed in the process of design?
One minute.
Yes. We received two cost estimates for this project, based on the schematic designs that we have. And we ended up at the 30.7 million. Al has some comparables. I can bring them up here and talk about that also. But through the design, things develop, higher, lower, and it comes down to, if we bring in a construction manager at risk, they'll be on board early, we can determine these costs ahead of time. So, I want to have Al come up and explain, or add some square footages, numbers that he's had on other projects that's in similar nature.
Got it.
Is that okay?
That's it for my part. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's time, there's no other lights. I'll invite Al to go ahead and say a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Al Pavandra, Carlson West, Pavanda, Architect, 5060 Dodge. As elected officials, I really appreciate this conversation because I, I think it needs to have the in-depth questions of spending money. I disagree with Jeff a little bit. There's only, there's only three firms, and local firms in Omaha that can, that can do the architectural work that have the experience in doing detention and corrections projects. Two of them are on our team, us and HDR.
Thank you very much.
That's why you didn't get a lot of response to the advertisement. So, what's before you today, Mr. Friend is right. It's an architectural contract of 7.75% of, of the construction costs, which have not been developed yet. There's been an estimate. The project isn't designed yet. Time is running out. If you want to spend the money for, ARPA money for this project, it has to be, this project has to be designed, bid, and built. And it looks like it's a long way away. It's really not. Probably going to take us till summer to bid the project. The type of bidding, whether you're using a CMAR, or a developer, or a construction contract, it's just going to, it's going to take time to get to that point. We have, so if the project comes in at 25 million, our fee is less. If it comes in more than 30.7 million, I am willing to cap our fee to 7.75 of the 30.7, which is the 2.3 million. So, if it comes in at 40 million, you add a bunch of stuff to it that's, that's not related to the project, that doesn't count, right? If you say, "Hey, we want to do a parking garage," well, that's not included in our, in our scope of work. We have risked at our, at our expense, meeting preliminarily with Mike and his crew and Well Path to come up with confirming the program. And what we have ended up with is potentially getting to 86 beds, not 76. On October 19th of this year, we bid a Department of Corrections project for the state of Nebraska. 96 beds. It came in at $22.8 million. It was 32,000 square feet. That is $712 a square feet. It was a maximum-security corrections project. When you talk, Mr. Morgan, about $500 or $600, you're, you're quite correct, but those are commercial projects. We're talking about a maximum-security jail, which also has a health component. So, we have basically a combination of a mental health treatment hospital integrated with all four of the day rooms. So, it's, it's, it is a combination of a hospital and a maximum-security project. If it comes in at 30.7 million, and in, in our program, size of 37,000 square feet, that's $829 a square foot. Keep in mind that the project that was bid October 19th was probably bid a year ahead of the year project, which is going to take another year of inflation to absorb. So, I don't, I don't feel, and I've heard, you know, the $1,000 a square feet, and I understand it's just looking at the total project budget and estimating it, but it, but it really is 829. And, and again, that's an estimate. So, what you're, what you're considering today is an architectural contract to work on the design. And you can bring whoever you want into it. All the commissioners can come in. You can bring partners in. Well Path has already plugged in a little bit on confirming the program. So, again, the amount of money that you're going to spend for construction and, and whoever's involved in the design, and whatever the end result of that project is yet to be determined. All you're considering today is an architectural contract for 7.75% of the construction with the cap of the amount tied to the 30.7 million. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have of me.
Okay. With that, there are no other lights, but I just want to add that when the, twice, I think, or three times, there's been a conversation about a five-two vote, and I was one of those that voted against the original resolution because I still feel, and I still feel today, that we should be doing both the Community Mental Health Center and the Corrections Mental Health Facility on that campus. But to, to me, this is being very disingenuous and disrespectful when we say we don't have people that know what they're doing on this project, when we have three experts, in my opinion, that are standing before us and have been involved since day one with this project. We, you are our experts. You have done these before. You operate the facility on a daily basis, and you do this for the county in our building projects all the time. So, I don't think that that's being, I do think that's being disrespectful to staff and to our contract, hopefully. So, I, I'm going to move forward. I'm going to vote to move this forward and not for the delay because, again, I don't see any reason, if we're trying to gather more information, if you go back and look at the materials that were given over this course of time, those have changed as we went on because we've had discussions amongst ourselves. We've had discussions with the public. We've had discussions about fine-tuning it. And that's still in the process, as Al said. That's what this is. And so, I think we need to move forward. We, as a board, have made mental health a priority. Our goal, I thought, was to continue to work to try to get our individuals the proper mental health needs that they need. And this is one of those, one of the projects that we'll be able to move forward to do that. It's not the best, in my opinion, but it's the second best. And so, we'll, I think we should continue to move forward with this and see the, the rest of the work before we make any further decisions. But, so I'll be voting against the delay and for the resolution. Louis?
It's Louis. Louis Jimenez.
I knew that. I just don't know why I called you Louis.
No, I appreciate it. Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I am in favor of delaying the project design because you're, you're still on schedule if you delay it. When, back in the spring, when you were looking at a new combined mental health facility, you, you were told that to do both facilities, it'd take nine months of design. And, and I'm going off of this. Can you put it up on the screen? Excuse me. I only got five minutes. Thanks. I hope I can go over my time.
Just keep talking, Louis.
Can you put it up? Thank you. The September timeline or date was for selection, option, or cancel. I think there's probably a lot of people in the community that would like to see this canceled. And then, this is what I'm talking about, nine months of the design phase from November to July 2024. And, and I agree, Madam Chair, that your team are experts. However, we in the community know these experts as well. And they are HDR. Constructional engineer, mechanical engineer is HDR. Electrical engineer is HDR, and civil engineer is HDR. I want to believe, Commissioner Friend, that you guys have a grip, control on how this project is going to be developed. But there's going to be a point where HDR is going to say, "This is what you're going to get." Is it, is this the time to prevent that? Where you look at all of your options and actually tell HDR how they're going to design. I've put together a squared footage, which is up here, and a price. The design contract is saying it's going to cost $30,000, or $30 million for everything, for construction, contingency, but basically to build the building. So, they're saying $1,000 per square foot for 30 million. Or if they're going to go lower, it's going to be more closer to $800 for a square foot at 29 million for 37,000 square feet. So, you just got to tell them, you need to tell them, or have more conversations with them, that if their price range is going to be what they're saying in the contract, 30 million, it, it needs to either, it needs to cost less than $1,000 per foot. If it costs $800 per square foot, they need a 24-million facility. If it's going to be the biggest facility they can get, then they can spend all the money. And it's the biggest facility that they can get. But, like I said, this is the time to make sure that your team has the direction that you want to go. Otherwise, they're going to just build it for you, and you know that. Thank you. Thanks.
Next.
Alicia Sexton, 1607 Laird Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. I am in favor with Mr. Kavanaugh on this motion, on this matter. The state has been given so many chances with mental health reform to provide those kind of services for our community. I'm not a real estate builder. I hear a lot of white smoke, as Mr. Friend said, with these numbers. I think it went from 18 million to somewhere to 33 million. A difference on how you guys can provide this facility through ARPA funds. in which Mr. Kavanaugh, if I'm not correct, I may have understood incorrectly, did state that those funds are not supposed to be used for these measures, for these type of facilities. I do believe that there are different ways our community, when I say our community, I mean the community that is the brunt of mental illness. Douglas County has a lot of that. PJ Morgan alluded to the homelessness on Seventy Second Street that he's seen for mental health. We have one of the biggest homeless kids situations in the nation, right here in Nebraska. If you walk through downtown Omaha, I don't know if you've done that lately, there are numbers of kids homeless on the streets down there, not adults. We're talking about kids. So they're kind of on their own. They don't have any guidance, as the adults could kind of figure some things out. But I definitely think that our funds should not be spent on that. I keep hearing a lot of architectural jabber jabber, what's going to be spent on it, how you guys are going to find staff for it. You guys already have a building, as Kavanaugh said, that you can't even staff, that's not even being used, to hold people, juveniles, that's still sitting there. I think that they should put, show us how these funds would go towards reforming mental health, not just a facility to house them in. Like you said, it's a twenty-one day stay. Right now, currently, even with mental health stuff and programs in the juvenile justice system, their current stay is only five months before they're back to the neighborhoods on home programs. So this is definitely not a solution to our mental illness. It's a waste of money. You guys should come up with another solution.
Thank you. Next.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Hal Dobbs. Address is three one four North Ninety-seventh Court in Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one four. I'm going to approach this just a little differently. I've spoke on this subject in front of you two or three times before, so I want to avoid repeating myself, you know, that I spend a number of hours and days in my life and years of my life in the mental health field. It was my particular area of practice, and I'm on two or three different nonprofit boards now and had been for a number of years, dealing with this very specific subject. So I believe there should be mental health expanded capability in our jail system. I'm also not here to be criticized for appearing in opposition or in favor of this motion as if I'm impugning the integrity of the experts that have been assembled to try to bring us to a resolution of this matter. I know that you never represent the taxpayer in a way that they speak essentially castigating the integrity of other people on the other side of an issue, and I'm certainly not hoping I'm in that category. You start down a slippery slope. It's like opening Pandora's box. Whenever we see a shiny new object, federal money dangled, ARPA money in this case, the bureaucracy seems to want to fulfill its prophecy of expanding and ever-increasing concentric circles, instead of figuring out if there's a way to do more with less. And why do we necessarily have to take the ARPA money in the first place? And so when you look at the original federal intention spread upon the federal record with respect to ARPA funding, it says clearly that ARPA funding is to be used to remedy problems created in the aftermath of COVID nineteen and the pandemic, and that no funds are to be spent for capital construction. It's very clear. And so I worry about a second problem that has arisen in the last four or five months, and you're facing it squarely. You've already voted to reduce your mill levy a little bit. Next year, I believe the legislature will rise to the screaming voices of the taxpayers of the city of Omaha and Douglas County to say we must change the way in which the windfall occurs. So if this building's timeframe, if it's for thirty million or whatever the number, stretches in to a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, and local taxing authorities can no longer take advantage of the windfall, that valuations will have to be reduced by any unit of government receiving property tax in proportion to the increase in valuation, you will be faced with an inability to pay for this building or any other ones without a tax increase. You'll have to vote to raise a mill levy to pay for projects you're thinking about now that may not even be on the books for a year or two or three from now. So I would urge caution. I think that Commissioner Morgan, you're on the right track about knowing what things will cost in two or three years before you put new concrete in the ground today. Because the legislature is going to act, they will change the way windfalls occur and force local units of government to have to vote to raise the mill levy or cut elsewhere to build new projects or engage in modernization. First point is ARPA can't be spent for the additional, your resolution reads, it reads addition, that's new construction. Can't do it as a clawback. You, you face a great risk of wasting time now, not thinking this through, to use those ARPA funds to expand mental health services in the jail and elsewhere, but not necessarily by adding new construction to that cost, which means future costs will be unaffordable, and the dilemma will be an even more constricting environment. So I think that taking a look at options to use ARPA money for jail mental health and providing those services in a different way would be the right course for you to take. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer questions now or in private conversations, as you may wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, almost afternoon. Wayla Yarbro, two four one seven Burdette Street. Just want to start with, with a big thank you for everyone who showed up today, especially you commissioners and support staff, who oftentimes we, we overlook. But without you guys, these meetings couldn't be possible. I do want to, I think the citizens of Douglas County have spoken very well, so I'm a little bit excited. I don't have to be the first person who gets up here and says this. But I, I want to draw our attention to the needs of the, the people who we serve, who these votes will affect within the county. These people are showing up, and they're telling you why this doesn't work, why this should be delayed, why this thing needs to be reconsidered. And one thing that people who are already saying, we cannot afford to live, property taxes are going through the roof. I have three children in private school. And I'm, I'm probably one of the more fortunate people who bust my butt and work my butt off to try to halfway give my kids a decent living outside of whatever's going on in mainstream education. I say that to say that this board has a lot of power. And it will behoove all of you to somehow start to see things from the citizen's perspective. And I, I think we, we don't come here to argue. We certainly don't come here to discount your expertise or that of the experts that you value. However, it's important that you see us as experts. You may notice the coat that I have on today is extremely cold. I just got back to Nebraska. I just came back from Arizona, where it was eighty-five degrees. And I got off a plane, and no one told me that it was cold and that indeed we had had our first snowfall. But I say that to say, in Arizona, they consider me an expert, not just on race equity, but they consider me an expert on socioeconomics, because I contribute to national plans and federal legislation as it pertains to budgeting, when it comes to things like jails and prisons and mental health and children and housing. And so it always baffles me that why in Douglas County we can't come to very simple solutions when there's very rigid guidelines for how we spend ARPA money. I, I want to take the time to read it. I think Mr. Dobbs did an amazing job just outlining how exactly we can spend this money. On page thirty-one of the SLRF, Final Rule Overview, this is a public document from the U.S. Department of Treasury. It says that you have to have an explanation of why a capital expenditure is appropriate. For example, recipients should include an explanation of why existing equipment and facilities or policy changes or additional funding to pertinent programs or services would be inadequate. Talks about having at least two alternative capital expenditures, things of that nature. But it also primarily says, "The Treasury presumes that the following capital projects are generally ineligible, construction of new correctional facilities as a response to an increase in rate and crime." Primarily because, to echo what the last gentleman just said, we've had mental health issues in the jails and in Douglas County prior to COVID. So these funds have to be spent as a response to conditions that were created during COVID. This does not qualify. And I'm not sure what accountability measures that the county or citizens can put into place to make sure that we are making decisions that are safe for the county and for its people. Primarily, I'm concerned with who we qualify as experts. I don't build buildings, so I, I trust these guys. If I'm trying to build a skyscraper or something, that's what they do. That I get. But what I am concerned about is, I haven't heard much about the service and the delivery, which is why we need the building in the first place, right? So what services are going to be in this proposed building that we're going to illegally use funds to build? What have, have the, has the jail, and I'm sure we can get this data, but what are the primary, and again, I just came back from three conferences where, again, I'm considered the expert. But one thing that we always consider is the purpose of the structure. So I want to, I just want to draw your attention to, what are the, what are their specific needs? Who will deliver services? Who will deliver services is directly related to how the services are received. Evidence change, rights to criminogenic risk factors for which we determine what services an offender should receive. They would consider me an expert. And according to their latest white paper, if you do not have a culturally observant or culturally not, if you don't have a culturally competent workforce to deliver these services, i.e., let's say, if we have, and I'm not racist, my grandma is white, but if we had an all-white board of individuals who are providing mental health services to a population that is sixty-six percent African-American, or who might be twenty-five percent Mexican, or who might be seven percent Burmese, according to the makeup of most of the, the individuals who are receiving mental health services in Douglas County, those people would then not be experts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak before the board?
How y'all doing? My name is Ross School Wallace, Executive Director of Viable Healing. Some of y'all I had given cards to last time I was here. Excuse me. Under the weather a little bit. I don't want to come to educate anybody on restorative justice, but I do consult, train, and facilitate. I'm going to try to touch base on a lot of what just recently we talked about, the mental health and different things like that, the concerns. I think we all can agree first and foremost that we can't build our way out of this. Okay? We're talking about construction. Just to give you a glimpse of that, some of our projects where I grew up in, Hilltop, Spencer, Logan Foddenell, were all brand new at one time. If we don't build the people, then we just building the structure. Same thing with mental health. I did time in prison. I tell you what that looks like. Med line. And then we come back out to the community. Restorative justice means that we address it. Restorative justice is tribal. It's a village approach. It makes sure that the community is accountable to what they, the product that they're sending to the schools and different places in our community. So it's a balance. We know we need it, but when people throw the word mental health out there, what do it look like? It looked like us actually addressing the problem and not locking it up. I, I work with kids right now with probation. I tell you what it looks like. Go to Blackburn. That's what it looks like. A facility that is not addressing the issues. We're talking millions of dollars that can re, actually, a fraction of it can actually change the lives and the complexity if we go uphill. Right now, we're downhill. We're in critical, we, we, right now, we're making critical decisions because we never addressed the things uphill. We're not addressing them now. We're hearing people from the community that's telling you, we have broken down families up here, and we lock them up, and they come back out, unhealed. Restorative justice is about healing. It's also tough on crime, because it takes the victims and put them first. Not a ninety-eight point five, sound like a radio station, plea bargains. That's not taking the victim serious. Restorative justice will lock those up that have not proven that they're valuable in the community and leave room for those that need to be there. And those that prison destroy their lives because they got habits, that mental health stuff. We send them there and lock them up, and then they're in pill line. I've seen these guys. I'm not bashing mental health. Tell me what it looks like. They said, what, they asking you, what do it look like? Not the same practices. We talk best practices. We talk evidence base. How is it a best practice if it's not working? And what's the evidence? We in the community know that it's not working. So if anybody want to talk about restorative justice, I'm here. And I guarantee for every dollar, every eight dollars that we spend right now building, we will save the taxpayers in restorative justice practices seven dollars. I promise you that. Study it. There's other cities. Colorado is in it. And so we could talk about it, but we can't build our way out of this. And structures are just structures if we don't lift the people up. And y'all heard it first from victims. So I'm tough too. I come from that side. I've lost family members. And another thing, right now, Radius is employing that. They've got other staff, and they've brought lived experience in there. That's mental health, not Charles Drew. Me and some other guys going in there to, so we can fix this problem, so the guys are not running. There's a language that we're speaking to them, a lived, experienced language. That's mental health, not pills, not facilities. Let's start working this thing from upstream. The broken families that's sending these kids fighting at, at football games. All the stuff we seeing happened here, we're dealing with it when it's crap and critical mass. We're making decisions and forced decisions upon ourselves. Let's start going upstream. Thank you.
Next.
Hello, Amber Wood, Omaha. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I thank you, Hal, for bringing that up. I'm a little confused on why we're even speaking about using ARPA money to, to build a building. I mean, it's one thing to build a building, but if you're using something that clearly states you shouldn't be, I think we need to relook at that. That said, my daughter was murdered almost a year ago, November thirteenth. And the people that murdered her repeat violent offender felons. So they've been in this system. They grew up in this system as juveniles. My biggest concern that I've, going through all these processes, talking to the legislature, talking to you guys, my biggest concern is public safety needs to be number one, and that means taking the violent offenders off the streets, locking them up, group homes you can't lock, which is something we're going to have to change, and we will change. But in the name of public safety, you keep the guys in that need to be in there. But at the same time, you have to help them while they're in there. So public safety is number one. Sorry, you have to sit down, sir, but you must go through this program and that program. So these community programs that you're talking about, that you want to keep using, bring them in and make them, on your watch, go through these. There's your mental health help. But building buildings doesn't help it if you're not helping the guys while they're in there. So I guess get a little frustrated because when that was brought up about the ARPA money, I'm just kind of blown away that we would even be doing that. But at the same time, that ARPA money could be used for those programs inside to rehabilitate the guys who deserve it and the ladies. Because the mental health aspect, obviously, they're broken, they need help, especially juveniles. If they're out there doing the things they're doing, they're already traumatized. So keeping them behind a locked door for their own safety, but mostly for public safety, for, like my daughter, the system created the guys that killed my daughter. And I want to stop that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Thank you, Amber. Thank you, Amber. Thank you, Mayor Dodd. I've said this before too, that have you not heard that the federal government said if you're misusing the money that there could be severe penalties? You're throwing my money away, maybe? And I tried to tell you that. These people tried to tell you that. Who are your lawyers advising you? I don't think the state told you to use ARPA funds for this and that and everything under the sun, right on the merry-go-round, maybe? Anybody that was running a business that needed some remodeling or something, or maybe even a shed built, could get ARPA money because you had to get, you had to spend it real fast. Excuse me, you're spinning this out of existence. Federal government might come back and really sue you for a hell of a lot of money. And how are you going to pay that off? How about all the grants also that you get? I'm going to end it with this. I'm not a criminal, I'm not mentally insane, but if I do become one or the other, I don't want to be housed in the same facility and treated the same by these best practices that apparently not working. If I'm mentally ill, I'm different here than the guy that's criminally ill. The two don't mix together. The treatment does not mix together. The Rain Man will tell you that. Temple Grandin will tell you that. Anybody that researches the brain will tell you that. But your best practices people are the ones telling you what to do. You better stop listening to them and listen to these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Ed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street. I'm a retired attorney, and I'm an expert. Spent almost 60 years now litigating difficult lawsuits. I've been here before talking about clawback. I've challenged the county attorney recently, and I've copied the board with my email. Deloitte and the county board itself must do its due diligence to avoid clawback of capital expenditures of over $30 million on this jail idea. Your due diligence has really been triggered by the very late arrival on the clawback problem of the county attorney and Deloitte in June. And I think I was here in April telling you about it. The Treasury Department, just by informed letter from a citizen or a lawsuit, or upon their own review of the papers you have to give them that tell them candidly what's going on, meets the qualifications of the Congressional Act. Now, a lot of people have come and dug a little bit of here and a little bit there to say that, oh, in an overview by of the regs or the reg rules, you can find some room to build a hospital. You can find a bill, and we'll get our jail in under the hospital thing. Well, I'm going to get real tedious now because I'm going to, in my demand to the county attorney, I said, you get me what you're going to tell Treasury? What you going to tell Treasury? I want to see what you've told them so far. I don't think your definition of this to Treasury or to a federal judge someday will pass muster on the idea that you got, an idea in that Congress meant you could build a hospital. So I've been, I've been really getting down the weeds on this. Al Dabbas told you, Commissioner Kavanaugh has told you, all these citizens told you, there's better ways to put hands on prisoners and work with them. Talk therapy. Hire, hire your contractor to come in. In a jail that just got awarded, I heard, as being one of the great jails, you've been taking good care of the mentally ill. Now get people hands-on, spend about 10 million of that ARPA money on, on hands-on service to these people in the present place. Now to be tedious, to be academic, and to be an expert. I've been digging into what Congress said. Oh, it's, oh, it's probably 30 pages, and it's got subparts. But I'll tell you, the first thing is, all these departments, Health and Human Services, Education, Labor, Agriculture, they put funds in. They're earmarked funds, and we're working on Department of Health and Human Services. The only place I found a right to build a hospital was from the Agriculture Department out in the sticks, out in rural places are so needy of health care, there is an opportunity to build a hospital with preapproval by the government. I've talked blue in the face about the mental health sections, 13 of them, don't ever say anything about building, and it's prefaced by another section under this fund, Department of Health and Human Services. And it talks about at 2601, I say this because I'm going to write this all up real soon for the county attorney so we can match wits as to who's got the better legal opinion on ARPA. Don't bet against me. Please don't bet against me. But over there, they say, the community health can be used for all sorts of community health needs, not mental health here. And then it says how this money ought to be used. And that's why this whole act is set up, how this money should be used. Care for COVID, equipment and supplies for COVID, workforce enhancement, hands-on service, community outreach and education. Not one word about go build a hospital. Not one bill. Not one word about it. Not one word about it. Now, I have challenged the county attorney. I'll challenge Deloitte too because they got $2 million for giving you bad advice.
Time. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Hello. Good morning. Happy Halloween. My name is Nicole Leclair, and I'm speaking on behalf of our Omaha. Happy Halloween. My mom has often dressed up as a fortune teller, you know my mom, to give out candy and fortunes to the neighborhood kids. I fear a group of us are here again today to tell you the future as we did with the kids jail that sits empty across the street. I hesitate to ask what could be scarier on Halloween, as some of your plans continue to be so, more about a small group of little people and less about a large group of the big people, the people who matter, the people who are watching, who vote you in and out of office, in and out of the seats in which you are sitting right now. I appreciate the recent vote in the last few months and the thoughtful conversation about how to proceed with the mental health plans today and in the past. That is very different from what occurred with the kids jail. Thank you today for raising important questions, Commissioners Morgan, Kavanaugh, Garcia, friend who stepped out, for clarifying. I feel like I've become an accidental activist. I never, sorry, never went to a meeting before five years ago, and now I'm quite involved. And I've gone to public meetings here, as well as the community forums, three of the four town halls. And while I'm sometimes disappointed with leadership, I find over and over again, the people of Omaha to be so intelligent and wise and have so many ideas to offer that are not being entertained. So part of my activist job has been to write emails, so I'm going to share some of that. And really, I feel my role is just to help people understand what's going on in their community. Most people have no idea what's going on, where to find the information, how to talk to people. I want to empower them to do so. Just so more people understand, listening here today or on Zoom or whatever they're watching on, the most recent topic in debate is the building or not building downtown by the current Douglas County Department of Corrections, CCDC, a new mental health facility to treat inmates. At one point, the plan being pushed was to build a new building that would treat both those incarcerated and the general public for their mental health needs. We are promised that these two populations would never meet in the same building. After much debate, that was finally given up. Thank you for that. Some members of the Douglas County Commissioners Board, and I say some, I try to say that often, now want to still build add-on to the current DCDC for only those who are incarcerated. They've not decided what to do with the rest of the people who might need mental health care. Currently, this DCDC plan is slated to cost $30 million. You know, it'll be more for only 86 beds. That is almost $400,000 per bed. Commissioner Kavanaugh has made the point that DCDC has space for 96 beds already in its facility. I've also noted is that this 30 million is ARPA money, as has been said over and over again. The use of ARPA money has regulations about how a county is allowed to spend money, expanding a jail, new construction, and specifically, new construction without absolutely approving space does not already exist for such need, or thoroughly setting two other locations and plans are all on the prohibited list. Eligible uses of these funds, this is a quote, include revenue replacement for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent fiscal year prior to the emergency. COVID-19 expenditures or negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including assistance to small businesses, households, and hard-hit industries and economic recovery. Premium pay for essential workers, investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure.
One minute.
Okay, I'm going to skip down. So at 2:00 AM this morning, I was responding to an email question to explain more about today's meeting. This is based on some of what I wrote there. They do not and have not made it easy for the average person to understand any of this, let alone people like you and me who already know things or think we do, or people who might actually work in the mental health field. Over and over, I speak to people who work in that field who know nothing of these plans. However, the people who build and develop things, the tiny few of them that they use over and over again is likely, like they speak their own foreign language, and none of us understand or can make any sense of it. There is success still to be had in this. I still believe in good and people and the right thing happening. The board can still do the right and sensible thing. We are still in need of long-term mental health care. And Borgeson and Rogers, you continue to say that you're going to go to the state, and we can change laws, and we are ready to support you. There will be a group of us who can go with you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Myers. I'm the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. I'm going to try and be as efficient as I can, but I am a little frustrated by some of the commentary that I've heard. I respect everybody's input, but not one of these individuals has spent time caring for the most difficult and high-risk mentally ill people inside of our jail. I'm going to tell you the story. I mean, we often talk about the risk of change, but we never talk about the risk of the status quo. We have a young woman right now in our custody. She's 20 years old. She's autistic. She was, she's a victim of sex trafficking, and she's pregnant. She bangs her head constantly against our concrete walls. We have to forcibly put her in a restraint chair for many, many hours a day to keep her from harming herself. She has been to the ER multiple times for self-inflicted injuries and seizures. She has assaulted several of our staff, spitting in their faces, kicking them in their face. We actually have declared an emergency in that housing unit so we can circumvent the union overtime rules so that we can have our crisis negotiators and our SIR team members present just to keep her and our staff safe. We are spending $1,000 a day additionally on her, just on our correctional staffing, and we've been doing this since early September. The Lincoln Regional Center was supposed to take her tomorrow, and now they balked, and they're not. She's not unique. She's extreme, but she's not unique. You can't have a program in a facility that has zero square footage designed to deliver treatment. That's what we have. Over half of our new, the newest addition of our jail in 2004 now houses individuals who are mentally ill. Zero square footage was built to deliver treatment. We have to, I've been, I've visited with this young woman twice in the past week. I spoke through a hatch in a door one day when she wasn't in the chair, and I was able to speak to her with the door open when she was in a restraint chair. In a, in a, in our infirmary, it's dimly lit, it's not therapeutic, but that's the best I've got to offer her. In terms of the operational costs, there are currently 32 beds for men that are single-celled in our proposal. Because currently, all of the individuals that are, we have to house individually, take up two-person cells. So I have a net loss of two beds for every one person that's housed individually. So that's a next, I have a gain of 64 beds. That means that I can close two 32-bed housing units that cost, again, approximately $1,000 a day to operate. That's $730,000 a year in operational savings by doing that two-for-one exchange. There are 12 beds for women in our proposal that are single-celled, so that's a 24-bed gain. I don't have any 24-bed housing units for women, so I can't give you a one-for-one exchange. But I can tell you that hypothetically, we should be able to, you know, the number should work out that we close that, close a female housing unit at least 50% of the time. You know, that brings our operational savings to over $900,000 by having three housing units closed, two of them off 365 days a year, and another one half the year. That offsets completely the operational cost that we would have for staffing the new mental health addition.
One minute.
I'm going to stay in my lane about clawback and so forth, but I can tell you that we have, there's been points made about the, pulling up different notes, that this has to be a result of COVID. In 2021, in 2021, we had 824 individuals put on suicide watch. We are on track in 2023 to have over 1,200 put on suicide watch. In 2021, in a closely related issue, we had 1,222 individuals put on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. We are on track in 2023 to have over 2,100. I can't tell you that that's a direct result of COVID, but it certainly has happened in the timeframe in which COVID has had its impact on our community. So Commissioners, I urge you to move this project forward.
Time. Thank you. Anyone else wishing? There is a hand I see on Zoom, quality care.
Yes. Thank you so much. Tisa Taforia. I'm a business owner in North Omaha at 3347 Ames Avenue, 68111. And I stand before you today, not as a developer nor a financial analysis, analyst, rather. I'm not even a native of Nebraska. But as a passionate advocate for family unification and therapeutic counseling services, particularly for the therapeutic group home in which I opened, which house is 12 beds over in North Omaha, I'm just a simple woman from Wisconsin. I may not be a subject matter expert in political etiquette. I may not be a financial expert. I may not be a developer, but I am an expert in service delivery. My experience has hailed from Hawaii to Wisconsin, licensing in seven states as a clinical trauma counselor, as well as a clinical co-occurring substance abuse counselor, licensed independently. So the services I provided, they were not as a result of funding from any entity such as ARPA, Douglas County, the state of Nebraska. They were made possible by the dedication of one individual committed to the cause of service delivery, not building buildings, secured attention, mental, I have no, no issue with that. Yes, I think it's a, it's a need. But when we talk about bridging the gap to these services, I've spent over $350,000 that was channeled into this project. And as I, I'd like to note that none of it came from the state of Nebraska nor Douglas County. But it manifested with a vision for community reintegration. And it aims to retain Omaha children within the state, ensuring that we see the treatment and nurturing path back into the community. Right now, there's a lot of money being spent to send them for placement in places as far as Utah, Georgia, you know, other areas of the country where family reunification isn't possible because most of these children and their families are impacted by poverty. So the goal here is not merely reconstruction. It's about a comprehensive holistic support. It's about the emphasis on well-being and rehabilitation for these individual children. And, you know, when it, when we're talking about, you know, the clawbacks and, and the, the kids, someone mentioned that they're still downtown, on the street, and, and the bureaucracy and the red tape that's stopping, you know, small individuals such as myself in the community, who are actually, people like Roscoe, who's in the community, who's actually providing services. Well, we, we can for sure be considered sort of subjectmatic experts on this when it comes to service delivery, not when it comes, for myself, not when it comes to budgets. So my urge is for you guys to consider implementing services, not only
One minute.
in this big, huge building that, that you're manifesting that's empty and has not considered any operations or funding. I'm just wondering, what does that look like for a small woman from Wisconsin? Who's that, was able to do it on her own? Consider partnering and giving some help and insight from people who are actually boots-on-ground. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? I do just want to make a couple of questions. I have one time left myself. That I want to be sure that folks know that ARPA uses does emphasize mental health, that the dollars can be used for mental health. Please take note of the language when it says "new facility due to increase in crime" is where I think the line is in difference between what we're doing and what ARPA regs say. And as far as state actions, we face that every year. Regardless of what the state does, we're gonna be paying regardless. We already are. And Director Myers talked about it with the folks that are currently being held in our correction facility, in my opinion, in a hu- inhumane way due to their mental illness, and that should, we should put a stop to that. I keep hearing about the private sector. If the private sector wanted to, they could have already stepped up and done something with this population. And I too have had many, many, many conversations with folks in this community that either have done mental health and gotten out or currently doing mental health. And just so people know, that there are similar funded projects that I did find around the country, from Ohio to Michigan to Colorado to South Dakota to Texas, who have done similar uses of their ARPA dollars based on the mental health needs. And so again, I would encourage this board for us to move forward with this so we can see what our details are. Listen again to those such as our director, who are in there every day dealing with these very difficult individuals. And it's, in my opinion, it is our job as the county and as elected officials to make space better, services better for those with mental illness that are in our jail, but also for our staff and the providers who are providing it. And so I hope that we can move forward and flesh out more of the details through passing this resolution today. So with that, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to delay this layover, and I need a clarification of how long you are wanting the layover for.
I wanted to say that.
I would think November 21st, we're, we're not gonna have a, there's one time in there, we don't have a meeting. I think it's around November 12th, I believe. And my thought might be to bring someone that's been involved possibly in UNMC's campus and facilities, and that's what I'd like to do. And I hope we can get some numbers and maybe meet. I appreciate what Mike Myers said. I said earlier, my intent is not to stop this project. It's really important, but I want to be sure that we do the best we can with spending those dollars. And that's my only goal about this. So I appreciate your consideration. I made that motion till November 21st to be back on the agenda.
With that, is, does the second or agree with that time, like, time date? Okay, please vote.
Motion fails. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan voting yes, all other Commissioners voting no.
And so now do we need a motion to move the resolution forward? Is there a motion to move the resolution forward? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Garcia. Please vote.
Motion passes five to two. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan voting no, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Okay, with that, we will move on to, we've already done the citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'll keep this brief. Let me speak on the elections again. I think it was the last week that I was here, or maybe the week before, when I spoke about the elections, and then everybody seemed to think that I was speaking directly about Mr. Brian Cruz, and I was not. I do not think I mentioned his name. If I did, it's only because I want him involved up here during a citizens' meeting where we, the people, are the presenters. But many of you sat right there and then had to counteract what I said, implying that I was talking about Brian Cruz and Douglas County only. I was not. I was talking about statewide and federal elections. I was talking about the lack of will of any politicians to really want to dig into, how can the machines screw up our election? Well, if you've never worked with the machines, you've never programmed the machines, you've never talked to a machines, you wouldn't understand. But now you got our artificial intelligence that'll do it for you. The point is, we have a gentleman in Nebraska that's been talking about this for a long time and challenging people and not getting answers. We, the people, want answers. You are here to give us answers. Starting with the Secretary of State's refusal. His assistant's refusal. Many of the county commissioners and election official refusals to provide evidence requested legally. Documents requested legally and refused to do so, refused to talk about it. We, the people, will have it talked about eventually, one way or another. So you probably ought to wise up and be the first in the country to open up the discussion. How could the election got stolen? I'm sorry, but Brian Cruz probably doesn't know what went on in the Secretary of State's office. So he's not the fall guy necessarily. But if he knew about it and he let it happen, then he is. If you knew about it and let it happen, then you are. It's going to come to a head where it will be discussed. So if you want an open discussion, an honest discussion, let Douglas County be the first one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Just real fast, sending out emails, I, I get responses from people who have to work. So I am gonna put that out there again of the
Nicole, you gotta identify.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole LeClaire, R. Omaha. But when I send out these emails, I get responses from people who want to be here but work during the day, of course. So I just want to put the idea out there of having evening meetings again, not maybe every week, but maybe once a month or quarterly so those people can speak to you in person, because I know they want to. It's just very challenging with working during the day. So, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak about an item not on the agenda?
Ed Floredy, 521 North 30, 38th Street. By the way, I had 23 years on the Board of Mental Health. As a lawyer member, so I, I know about the movement of citizens into or kept out of the commitment system to protect their civil liberties. But I do want to give a word to this 42nd Street Court or in the role the county court, county hospital out there has to play in it because it has delivered great coordination of various centers of service, and it has provided service itself. It needs to be expanded by the amount of time you can stay there, and we ought to use the rest of that ARPA money for that with a real emphasis on hands-on service and not construction. Thank you. Oh, the other thing, they're almost all insured or Medicare or Medicaid, whereas all of our prisoners are mostly on our tax dollars. Thank you.
Louise? Can you restart the question?
Louise Humana, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I did not get to talk about this resolution, so I'll do it now. This is the resolution that directed staff to build a, design and build a mental health facility at Corrections using ARPA funding. So if you could see here, at the start of the resolution, you talk about 15
Louise, this is, this was on the agenda, and we just had over probably an hour conversation, so
No, this is not. This, look, let me read you this resolution.
It's about
Whereas the board previously committed to US, to use 50 million of its American Rescue Plan Act ARPA allocation for mental health priorities. And it goes on to say dated this 23rd day of May, 2020. This is the May resolution that I'm talking about. And you, you have $50 million, and there's needs up in the air right now. And the board needs to say, and pass another resolution, that you're not gonna use the full $50 million for this project that you approved.
We, we did have another, so I'm gonna cut you off because we did have another resolution on this project. And again, we just passed one today, so
Oh, okay, well
We can get you a copy of it.
I'm talking about the May resolution. Okay, this
But it's, it's a non-issue now.
Okay, well, with, I'm asking if you're still gonna do parking on this resolution. I didn't read the whole thing, so there hasn't not been any clarification if you're, if the board is still gonna be doing parking on, with this project because that might be conflicting with ARPA money. When you do capital expenditures, Mr. Rogers, or excuse me, Roger Garcia is in charge of moving that aspect forward. I don't know when your committee's gonna meet up again on it. I'd like to know. I also don't know when the mental health committee is going to meet up again. I'd like to know. So I can better track the developments. You know, we, you have the director come forward and insult the public for having the gall and the time to present themselves and tell you what they think should be happening in your community. That we will be better informed on these things and be, be better activists if we know when you're gonna have your meetings and that the staff is more available to each of us. You know, some of us are probably personas non grata to the staff or to individual commissioners. But this, that does not mean that we shouldn't be up here at the podium and have this board listen to what we have to say. Okay, you have commit, you, you have opportunities here for the public to speak on these matters. And you said it yourself, you're the most open body in the county. So you, the staff needs, needs to understand that. I, I, I think that the information, it needs to be available. Are you gonna meet on parking? Is parking even a issue? Is the contract that you're gonna put forward for the construction, is there gonna be a clause saying that you're not going to exceed or you're not gonna use more ARPA funding? That already needs to be understood because that will help with the design. If you give them the money, or if you tell them what money they're gonna be using, that is going to determine the design. $50 million is not for the design, it's not for the construction. So you need to be more clear on these things and respect people when they come up to the podium.
Louise, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to a public hearing. We do have a one liquor license for Hy-Vee at 20310 Bitten Street. Manager Rob Reif of 1141 Twin Ridge Road in Lincoln. Action can be taken today, but this is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this item?
Hi, I'm Ginny Ward, 16905 Emmeline Street here in Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm just here behalf of Hy-Vee, if you, anyone have any questions that I can answer for you.
Anyone have any questions, or is there anyone here to speak during the public hearing? Commissioner Friend?
Ginny, I feel like you've been here an awful long time. I wish I had a question for you, but I don't. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
You got your county government 101 today.
I did, I did. Thank you.
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thanks for being here today. Next, we'll move to committees, the first being the Finance. It's the budget report as presented. Next is Child and Youth. There is a resolution before us directing the Douglas County Board's administrative staff and Douglas County Youth Center's administrative staff to jointly develop a plan for presentation to the Board at a later date for operating both Douglas County Youth Center and Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center concurrently, with the goal of opening the Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center between March first and July first of 2024, and with the intent of generally housing youth held on adult charges at the Youth Center and youth held on juvenile charges at the Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center, with some flexibility to house youth in the appropriate facility depending upon the specific charges and classification requirements. With that, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I'm just concerned, again, that we're gonna make a decision here that'll probably be costly and wasteful. The population today of the Youth Center is eighty-nine. The average daily population over the last twelve months has been seventy-nine. To do what this amendment proposes, which holds force that it would be in the best interest of Douglas County, I'm not sure about that. Would add forty additional staff for the two facilities, and, you know, probably an additional five at the existing Douglas County Youth Center. None of these have been posted. The cost would be two and a half million dollars in addition to what we're spending now, plus a five percent COLA that would hit the first of the year. None of these items are reflected in this amendment. And this is part and parcel of the problem that we've had with this kids' jail fiasco all along, is the important things are never discussed. We're five years into this project now, and we're recognizing that the kids' jail across the street, which is not open, overtime, over budget, unstaffed, not a single kid in there, now is going to need the Forty-Second Street Douglas County Youth Center to stay open. This is really, a fiasco is a mild word when you get to the tax increase that was put forward to pay for this whole thing. And all of these costs, which are not reflected in this resolution, I certainly want to try to make this mistake as painless as possible for the taxpayers and residents of Omaha, and as good as possible for the children that it will affect. But I'm not sure that this particular thing does it because it lacks so many details. What we might consider is because we have an empty building across the street, which can't be used, there's nobody to work there, and we heard from the Health Center people the difficulty in staffing professions, finding, you know, forty, fifty people to staff that place and the, you know, two point three million dollars, two point five million dollars plus five percent the first of the year to pay for it forever or for a significant period of time, is something that really should be talked about. There are alternative uses that could be employed for the building across the street, which stands vacant. We just discussed one. This is a secure facility that could be utilized to house mentally ill corrections inmates. It's empty, and the Director indicated to us that he's not gonna have to add forty-five additional staff in order to accommodate these people. So we certainly should have these discussions in the interest of the taxpayers of Douglas County, in the interest of the children. We certainly should have these discussions in the interest of the best use of the remaining fifty million dollars in ARPA funds, which we could utilize if we repurpose the building across the street on Forty-Second Street to upgrade our existing Youth Center, to upgrade our existing Douglas County Health Center, to upgrade the mental health facility that we already run at a fraction of the cost of the, God only knows, thirty-plus million that was discussed this morning, to build an expansion of the jail to house people who have mental health needs. This resolution, I understand the sponsor and the people supporting it are trying to make some lemonade out of some really bad lemons, but I'm just not sure that it gets us there. It actually, I think, compounds the financial fiasco that is the kids' jail and doesn't utilize some really cost-saving opportunities that that vacant building presents us when we're talking about building, a big new building that has to be secure to hold inmates who have mental health issues. So for all of those reasons, I'm not able to support this resolution here today. It would be good if we could have this discussion more robustly, publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to continue to set up some context for the resolution, some may recall that in August, there was a related resolution regarding youth detention where essentially it delayed the move to the new facility with other kind of specifications on how we would go about that. But essentially, it delayed it. For those of us who sponsored that resolution, you know, it was, for one, a chance to not rush going into the new facility on its own as the youth detention facility, considering the capacity concerns that were present then and now. So it bought us some time to step back, think about the path forward, talk to stakeholders in the system from, you know, county attorney, public defender, probation, you know, staff on the front lines of the facility, and the list goes on. So we went back and did that and thought about all the options. At first, I did not want to move towards a two-facility model. I wanted to avoid the additional expense of a second facility. But there's a couple of things leading us in this direction at this point. For one, the stakeholders within the system said that for the youth charged on the juvenile side, not the adult side, and youth charged on the juvenile side that would, that could be present at the new facility right next to juvenile court, public defender, probation, everybody, not everybody, but a lot of stakeholders working on that juveniles case that, again, has a juvenile charge, a lesser charge, that synergy that can happen at the new facility next to all those stakeholders could expedite those cases for youth that don't need to be detained for very long, that could benefit from resources in the home and the community, they can receive that. However, again, we are not ignoring the capacity concerns that are still present with the fact that we've still been around seventy-nine, seventy-eight youth in detention in general. We, of course, don't wanna move towards an option where capacity could be a strong concern or at risk. So this is where we have the potential to have juvenile judge-charged youth at the new center and adult-charged youth at the current facility on Forty-Second and Center with a little bit of discretion in the middle, cuz every case is unique, every classification that comes in is unique. So there's a little bit of discretion for staff to utilize that when needed. But big picture, that's kind of the direction of this two-facility model for the foreseeable future. Maybe for the next one to two to three years, this could be what we do. And then there is a piece in the resolution towards the end that says that we'll continue to talk to probation and the state of Nebraska and other stakeholders to see what we do longer term with that facility on Forty-Second Center or in general within the juvenile justice sphere here in Douglas County. So it addresses capacity issues. We still maintain enough capacity because we'll be at both facilities. And there is a balance of some expenses being covered because there is a per diem rate that our partners provide for us to provide that service to them, whether it's probation or other jurisdictions that are counties, like Sarpy County, for example, to provide that service that we're providing at the Youth Detention Center. So I already have about a minute left, but when I loop back around or if somebody else wants to talk about it, I do want Brad and his staff to discuss the projections for this revenue, so to speak, of that per diem rate and then the expected expenses that would come about ramping up staff to be at both facilities. So I do want to get in more detail about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Commissioner Garcia, and he laid things out in a pretty effective and analytical way. I appreciate that. I don't, I'll say this, and I don't care how we got here. History teaches us lessons, and that's fine. But that history, we can't change. So it doesn't really matter practically how we got here. We have a situation, frankly, it doesn't matter. We need to understand it, but it doesn't matter. All I know is that we have a facility downtown that the taxpayers paid for that's not being used right now, specifically created for youth rehabilitation and presented to the public through bonding mechanisms. So our property taxpayers said, we either like it or we don't like it. And we said, here's what we're doing. That facility's sitting there, it's empty. We need to make a determination as to how to best move forward. I would also offer the idea that we need it now, and we're going to need it two months from now, or five months from now, or ten months from now. We are going to need it. One of the reasons I say that is typically, crime statistics grow with the growth of a community. The last census that I looked at in the state of Nebraska, there were four counties that actually had verifiable growth. Douglas County was one of them. With those type of things, whether we like it or not, crime statistics grow with it. Not incrementally or not equally, but they grow, and we have to deal with that. My point is, I think we need the new Juvenile Justice Center, and we need DCYC indefinitely. Commissioner Kavanaugh was right, two point five million annually. That's how much it's gonna cost approximately to run them both. Approximately forty-four staff. The entire effort here provides, gives us the opportunity in Douglas County to care for public safety, to implement new and innovative ways, implement new and innovative ways, additional ways, to divert youth and ways that'll intervene and deal with problematic behavior that permeates within the young people in our society. The short version of it is, I don't think we have any, I've said this, it's a little bit, it's a little bit intellectually lazy to say we haven't been debating this. I've been on this Board for three years, and we've been talking about it. In public, in executive sessions, in subcommittee meetings, we've been talking about this and working through issues and trying to come up with solutions. This is a solution that isn't the be-all, end-all, but it's a practical solution that I've been talking about a little bit, and I think the rest of the remainder of the Board can weigh in on this. I'm not sure we have any choice at this point. And we have to communicate clearly to the residents of Douglas County. If it's, if it, whatever happened in the past forced us into a situation now where we have to say, yes, by the way, that price tag is two point five million bucks a year. I'm, I'll get up on a pedestal, I'll get out in front of people and say, this is what it's gonna cost. But I also know there's value to it. We do good work at DCYC. We will do good work at the Juvenile Justice Center downtown. The bottom line is, if we are helping kids and we are moving them in a direction that promotes success, I'm all for it. And is that worth two point five million dollars? Frankly, my fellow commissioners, I think it is. And to the members of, to the citizens of Douglas County, I think it is. And I will make the argument, I will make it till I'm blue in the face. I don't think we have any other choice. I think we have to do this, and then we work toward, as Commissioner Garcia said, we, as time goes on and these ideas have been implemented, maybe we can really do some pretty cool stuff, like watching numbers actually reduce again. But we need the capacity, and we need it now. Madam Chair, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And I wanna thank Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Friend because I know they've spent some time, most recently with the stakeholders. They communicated that conversation to us. I have as well. I worked with these stakeholders for many years as a practicing attorney in the juvenile court. And I've been to the Youth Center on many, many, many occasions, dealing with clients. The problem is, five years ago, we were told a bunch of things that simply haven't panned out, weren't true, haven't resulted in reality. One of them was that there were gonna be all these wonderful programs that were gonna reduce the population, therefore, the kids' jail could be built at a tiny size that proved to be not true, and it's inadequate. Fifty-four capacity, we have eighty-nine kids at the Youth Center today. That's five years into these programs, we're supposed to work their magic, and it hasn't happened. It's been indicated our population's growing. I've been looking at the crime statistics, as has Sheriff Hanson, and I think Commissioner Morgan commented on this. They're not going in the right direction either. And so, you know, the capacity is not going to increase or decrease based on any of these things. And right now, we have a facility at Forty-Second Street, Douglas County Youth Center, that could handle these numbers. We are going to self-inflict this additional cost by forcing a portion of the population that currently resides at Forty-Second Street. And that cost, for no particular reason, is gonna be two and a half million and up going forward. We don't have to do this. It's not in the best interest of Douglas County to do this. And I appreciate the work that's been done by my colleagues. I'm just saying, many of the people that are the stakeholders that they met with didn't support this kids' jail in the first place. They thought it was a bad idea from the get-go. And they are open to alternatives at this point that would involve less than a two and a half million dollar additional expense to the taxpayers of Douglas County. That doesn't do anything. It doesn't lower the number of children that we're locking up. That number is gonna continue to do what it's been doing. It just costs the taxpayers more so that people can justify a sunken expense that they made that turned out to be a really bad decision. We can repurpose that facility at minimal cost to deal with another incarcerated population that has needs and do the things that we need to do for the children at the facility that we already run on Forty-Second Street that accommodates them all, but needs to be upgraded. I think we can all agree on that. And that the stakeholders have been dealing with without a huge problem for a very long time. What we did in terms of expanding the capacity for the county attorney, public defender, and the juvenile courts across the street, I think we all felt was needed and justified. And it's occupied, and it's up, and it's running. The kids' jail was a bridge too far. It was a bad idea at the beginning. The stakeholders didn't agree on it. It was done without a vote of the people. It was done with a property tax increase. And it was done in a form that is unusable. That's why it's empty. And so trying to shoehorn these two populations around to justify a bad investment is just gonna compound the error and increase the cost exponentially. So in addition to all the costs that you've already got- So in addition to all the costs that you've already got in this unusable facility, you're going to add $2.5 million a year to that, just to justify the fact that, well, we did it. Rather than utilizing it as an opportunity to accommodate a need that we just spent, you know, the better part of a couple hours talking about, at zero additional capital construction cost, it's at least worth considering. If you want to talk about the best interests of Douglas County, consider some of those things. And, you know, this, I commend my associates for the work that they put into this, but this just doesn't get us there. This gets us deeper in the hole, it increases the cost, it doesn't solve the problem. And the idea that per diems will dig us out of this hole, I'm sorry, just isn't historically supported. You would have to do so many per diems that it would essentially involve
Tight.
A population expansion of locked up kids.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. It's no secret that I was not supportive of the original proposal in 2019, 2020. You can just Google my name, and you'll find articles about my stance. However, I'm very practical in having to face solutions that are, or rather, issues that are in front of us, and can use history for context, but cannot stay there as we continue to face issues in different spheres, including juvenile justice. So that's why we wanted to have, you know, private, very honest conversations with different partners at different levels, different points. Hey, in your opinion, what do we need to do? Do we just stay at the large facility? Do we try to, you know, just go into the new facility by itself? Do we move to a two-facility model? And we heard consensus that they desired, at least for the juvenile judge-charged youth, to be at the new facility again, so they can be right next to juvenile court, public defender, probation, everybody, not everybody, most, a lot of people who are working on that case can be working with the youth in proximity to each other. Again, historically, I had pushed for using that funding for programming instead, but we are where we are, and we can't change history. So, again, talking with stakeholders and having capacity concerns in mind, we also, on the topic of capacity, we also don't want judges in probation to feel pressured to just release youth as much as possible in almost, you know, in scenarios where maybe they would not want to, but, you know, have this dilemma of capacity in front of them. So we don't want that to be in place either for those youth who are charged with serious crimes of murder, of gun charges, of sexual assault. We need to have capacity for those circumstances. So there's this difficult situation where, of course, we know some youth don't even belong there, we know some youth are on low charges and could benefit from resources for the family, resources in the community, in-home services. I worked as an in-home services consultant slash worker at Boys Town, so I know all about those services. Doesn't make me the expert, but I'm familiar. So, yes, some families, that's all they need. Other cases with an uptick in gun charges, there are some serious crimes that are happening, and we may need to remove youth from whatever environment they're in and detain them for a while while we figure the situation out. The system, not just Douglas County, the whole entire system and the whole community figures out what is best for that youth and what is going on in that scenario where we're seeing murder charges, sexual assaults, et cetera. And so that's where we need to ensure that we have capacity for all cases that are in front of us. And, you know, I do want to call up Brad, I know I'm running short on time, but as far as like the, the expected expenses versus expected per diem rates slash revenue, what that looks like?
Hello, everyone. Brad Alexander, Director of the Douglas County Youth Center.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Likewise.
In 50 seconds, Brad, what does the revenue versus expenses look like in this scenario?
The revenues?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about? So I ran some numbers I was asked to earlier this year, and this was back when we were operating with a 287 per diem, and we forecasted the revenues out for this year to be 3.6. So I guess you do the math, I mean, what's the percentage of 287 versus 334? That's, that's your increase there. Clearly bringing back the U.S. Marshals is beneficial. I think they would have been forecasted at somewhere around 120,000, but that, that number fluctuates a lot. There's times, and actually lately, we were seeing more and more of the federal kids in, and I think that number actually would have been much higher than that. And then I think opening up the doors to some kids from other counties would certainly be beneficial as well.
15 seconds.
I'll, I'll close out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Brad, I'll give you some time, but I wanted to lay out a couple of things. Commissioner Kavanaugh makes some, some good points, but the, but the problem is, the bonding was pretty specific. I mean, those history lessons are valuable, and the bonding was pretty specific. I'd love to say, well, let's use this as a big, huge cafeteria or a parking facility. We can't. We, we'd have to jump through some pretty, I mean, there, this would require some pretty interesting legal analysis. That's the first thing. It's also, because of that, it leads us down a funnel or paints us into a corner. The taxpayers have paid for this building. Doesn't, doesn't matter what happened six years ago, they've paid for it. They're going, okay, guys, we paid for a building, what are you going to do with it? We have a variety, we have a small variety of options. One of them is to actually implement the type of strategy, high-level strategy that we're looking at right now. Also, whether it's a, it's not a money grab, the additional capacity provides us an opportunity to help neighboring youth. A kid lives in Sarpy County, he lives in Sarpy County, right? He could throw a rock in some places and hit Douglas County. By the way, if Sarpy County doesn't have the capacity, guess what happens? That youth gets in major trouble, they're shipping them to Wyandotte County, or they're sending them out to Western Nebraska, or they're sending them to Iowa, because we're not going to take them because we don't have the capacity? I'd rather have the capacity and help youth, the, the boundaries of our, of our attitude and our ability to help people do not stop at Harrison Street. And, and those youth are here, too. They come up into Douglas County and they, you know, they, they're running around with us. So the bottom line is, we have an opportunity not just to, not just to take care of a few, a few practical issues right now, but we have an opportunity to take care of even more youth. Forget about how much the per diem is. We're not trying to make money here. What we're saying is, if we could help 10 other youth in any given week or any given month with, with diversion and intervention services and the type of care that we provide at DCYC and the Juvenile Justice Center, that's a win. That's a win. Brad, I'll give you the rest of my time, there's a couple minutes. I, and I don't know if Roger, any more questions, but. Could you, could you elaborate a little bit the, on the, on the staffing issues that you're facing right now and maybe that we'd face when we transitioned downtown?
Currently, we're actually in pretty good shape, but to transition downtown, I believe it would be 42 new staff, and that's under the scenario where you have all eight, or all eight living units open at the, the new facility, and then five living units open at the current facility. That's 104 total beds, so when you look at operational capacity, and we're at 89 today, we don't even fit under that scenario. So I think we need to look at operating at at least seven living units at the current facility. To do that, you would add another 11 staff members. And then you were talking about, excuse me, I'm sorry, in the resolution, it speaks to juvenile court kids downtown, and then the adult court kids out where we're currently located. We have over, well, yesterday we had 60 kids that were in juvenile court, so we don't even, the juvenile court kids don't fit into the new facility right now. They just, they just don't. And I know in the resolution, there's some language about classification and some ability to, you know, that wouldn't be a hard and fast rule, we would have some, some flexibility to move some kids that are in juvenile court that, out to the current facility. And honestly, in many respects, that would make sense, because I think a lot of people think that, you know, we just classify kids by juvenile court versus adult court, and there's so much more that goes into that. Some of our juvenile court kids are actually classified quite high, just because when we classify, we're trying to create an environment where kids are placed in situations where they're going to be safe, and we can't just look at juvenile court versus adult court. So certainly there would be some juvenile court kids that would probably be more than appropriate to, to remain at the current facility.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Morgan?
Hey, thank you for your service.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, no other lights from commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Happy Halloween. And I say this because you should be dressed as cheerleaders, cheerleaders for Halloween, because this project has relegated this board to being cheerleaders for the project, which hasn't come to fruition. It has not been developed as you had asked, particularly with the youth services. The youth services are not available that are reducing the incarcerated population of the youth. That, I think we should, we should all know that this is a complicated matter with the youth, although there are some things that could be done. I remember Mark Kraft telling his fellow commissioners that maybe the board should be going to school and talking to the kids. The board should be looking at truancy and supporting organizations throughout the community that deal with, you know, youth that are not attending or who aren't advancing in their school. I think that's important. I don't know if you do that. So, but anyway, on the resolution, I'll read this part. Be, therefore resolve that this board directs staff to continue discussion with the State of Nebraska Juvenile Probation Services Division, Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, and other community stakeholders regarding long-term alternatives and possibilities for the utilization of the available space at Douglas County Youth Center. So what I'm understanding is, and you've mentioned this before, is that you're going to have two facilities where the downtown location could be used by judges to send felonious youths, youths that have committed felony, who maybe are coming back to the judge because they violated their probation and so forth. I think that's a good idea to separate the youth population and use both facilities in, in that manner. So the staff put, getting together and coming up with these categories, I think, could be helpful. I don't know how it's going to pan out, but certainly the staff, you know, Brad Alexander would have more control over that if you have two facilities. So the facility westward would be more open to receiving other youths from other jurisdictions like Sarpy, outstate. I think that's a good idea. Maybe traveling outside of their county, if a youth travels outside of the county to come here, could be helpful to them, just that experience. And at the same time, maybe provide room in DCYC for the youth services that the community provides. Like have an actual central location, maybe put the community together to help determine what that would look like in DCYC. Pick who's going to be there, what locations they're going to occupy in DCYC, but having a strong community, youth services, serve, footprint from the community in DCYC is a good idea, because what it sounds like is you're going to be going with the two facilities.
One minute.
And I think exploring how you're going to figure, how you're going to use those two facilities is a good development. You know, I'm disappointed as much as Mr. Kavanaugh, maybe differently than he is, but I'm disappointed because a lot of us showed up to this board and said, this is not going to work out. But you gave the reins to your developers, and they gave you this mess. But making sure that the youth services from the community, that component, is well-established and understood, and to be presented to us is needed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board on this item?
Yes. Alicia Sexton? Again today. I'm not sure if you could put these up for me. This is a picture of my mother and my son. This is another picture of my son. I am a surviving homicide victim. I'm also a surviving homicide victim of a parent of a, of a victim, a homicide victim. I also was part of the tragedy that day. I was a victim myself. I was at the scene, I was part of that. I'm not a surviving victim. That was at work why my son was killed. I was actually there, so that's a big difference between victims, surviving victims. Anyway, I am here in regards. I heard Mr. Mike Friend say that he would talk till he was blue in the face. Well, our community has been talking until they've been black in the face and purple and all of the other colors, and nobody has heard our community in regards to our concerns for our youth. I hear him talking about kids in Sarpy County and Douglas County taking care of Sarpy County kids. Why are we doing that? We have our own kids to take care of that the state hasn't been taking care of already. No secret that the plans that you guys have in place, we haven't heard anything on the mental rehabilitation of these kids, just that it's going to be in a process with it. Right now, the two defendants that perpetrated the crime against me are already in the care in the facility of DR, DCYC, YRTC. They also don't have a plan on rehabilitation for these kids. One of these kids has been currently at one of the facilities on the intake for months and months. They haven't even evaluated him yet, slowing down his progress, if that's the plan. Don't know how you plan to rehabilitize premeditated killers, but if that is the plan, he's not already getting the services, so they're already failing him as well. The services that you guys have in plan for our kids, you're saying that they would be at the center, is this going to be a locked facility? They stay there, or are they going to go there and have another intake thing and then be back out on the streets to their dysfunctional families or whatever it is that caused them to get to where they're going? None of it makes sense. It sounds like not white noise, it sounds like gray, black, blurred noise for the people, layman people. I'm not a politician. Um, I'm not a politician. I'm a victim survivor. Um, if we're looking at it from that side of the aspect, you guys don't have a plan. You're not rehabilitating kids. They're not getting the help they need. Another building is not gonna help it unless you plan on keeping them locked up. At this point, um, for me and my family, your plan does nothing for our safety. Um, these killers, um, they get to commit complete programs of art classes. You guys have that kind of thing set up for them at DCYRTC and the juvenile centers that you have them in place. But they have not yet, even going through my court hearings last week, they tried to put these two killers together in one facility. How does that make sense? That two juvenile offenders that premeditated murders and committed the one, actually committed one murder, be put together in the same facility to what? Come up with another premeditated plan to finish?
One minute.
What they were already starting to carry out? Um, I'm still a survivor. Me and my daughter are still on the streets. Um, the system has to do better to protect the victims and stop giving the juveniles that commit these crimes rehab. What are we gonna do for them? How are we gonna keep them safe? How are we gonna get these kids back to the community safe? Well, some of them are eligible for it. I'm not saying throw them all away. But the ones that aren't eligible for this, there has to be a baseline on it. Unless everybody is in favor that they would like for their killers, their would-be killer, to get out. If you guys feel the same way, that you'd be okay if your killer was right back on the streets after doing five months of an art class that they're doing good in and moving forward, well then, I guess, you know, that's what you do. Um, but for the people that are still out here and have to see these kids when they come back out, it's scary.
Time. Thank you. Next.
Hi there, Amber Wood, Omaha. I've talked to you, uh, and told you my daughter Carly Rainwood was killed, but I've never told you about her. And there's a reason I need to tell you about her today. Carly had a really, really good work ethic. She had three jobs. She was self-taught in anything that interested her. She went to a place called YouTube School. Her and her friends joked about. She was interested in anything, she would go learn it and learn it to a T. Carly knew that knowledge and skills were power and Carly had an entrepreneur- entrepreneurial spirit from, as a little girl. She would make slime, sell bracelets. I mean, the kid was, she always, she learned the value of money very quickly and the independence when you have, when you have money. She was saving to be a business owner. Um, she already had her EIN. She wanted to be a homeowner and was saving for that as well. Carly dealt with bullying as a child to the point where the police were called and I got called to the school. Um, she also, excuse me. So we went through a bout of, uh, depression there and I got her into counseling and she realized that that was also work. Dealing with things is work. And when we talk about restorative practices, there's a lot of, there's a lot of restorative justice terms that are being put out there that aren't actually happening. And it's a vague term, so I never liked that term. But the, the core and the actual restorative practices are owning up and seeing things and, um, looking at yourself and understanding what impact you have had. So despite her trials and feeling abandoned, the bullying and feeling abandoned by her father, Carly chose happy. She made a decision one day to choose happy. Now, Carly was very emotionally intelligent. In fact, I had a book called Emotional Intelligence and I found it in her room and she read it. She understood and figured out her self-worth and then she added tax. She took pride in her appearance. She took pride in her ability to learn new things. And she took pride in her self-care and mental health, all things that she figured out. I feel that Carly, since Carly wanted to be on her own and prove that she was gonna be a productive member of our society, even she already went and voted, she left a mark with everyone, everyone she met. She was this light and anyone who's met her on any side of the tracks, she left them with more empowerment. Now, the thing I feel that's missing here with a lot of this youth is the emotional intelligence. They haven't been taught it. You have two facilities. Carly was beyond kind and sharing and she was accepted in all communities. And when I say accepted, they looked up to her because of the confidence she eluded, because of her independence and because of her work ethic. So you have these two facilities. You're here. And as Commissioner Friend said, you've got choices, um, but you're minimal on those choices. Use the buildings. Juvenile crime is not going down. It's going up. Your population numbers are going up. Douglas County's growing. Teach these kids emotional intelligence. Help them while they're in there. Help them with the safety. Your job is infrastructure and to be ready because, believe me, we are going to the legislature and we are going to make sure that these judges detain the kids that need to be detained. Group homes that aren't locked are not the answer for gun violent juveniles. Bad policies killed my daughter. And now this is an opportunity to fix bad policies and keep your own, your own child and our public safer. To empower those kids be detained, let's do this right. Let's get, set the standard for the state and other counties and for the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Russell Wallace, Bible Healy. I'll be brief. Uh, I think, you know, what you kinda hearing on both sides is that, um, and I said it before, we can't lock, lock, lock our way up out of this. But we do need accountability. I work with these kids. When I talk about broken families, I'm talking about elders condoning behavior. I worked outreach on the streets and what I was giving those kids was not being reinforced. When I talk broke down families, I'm not just talking about black. When I talk urban, I'm not just talking about black. When we talking broke down families, you guys know, these kids, what Amber just talked about, that emotional piece is big. These kids think it's the end of the world when things happen that we knew and we were taught, you gotta kinda suck it up a little bit. And I'm not saying that was the right thing. Remember my grandfather told me, "Grown men don't cry." And I was just fighting not to cry. That's what I was taught. So I think we can find a peaceful medium. I'm okay with the bed space, even if we had to occupy too, because I think we will, if we continue not to look upstream. That's what we're saying. So even in the, the, the spaces that we have, we can't just have midline. Then we're dealing with the recidivism piece because we locked it up and we didn't do nothing while I was there. I've seen it over and over again. So the peaceful medium would mean that we're not only looking at the infrastructure of how it's built, all that other stuff, but what we gonna do with them? While we're doing that, let's look upstream. How do we support these families so we get better product? Back to the Blackburn thing. This is exactly what I'm saying. We take these kids out of school, out of the legitimate schools, for gang banging, fighting, all that stuff, and put them all in a building together. And we expect good results. And for the most part, Blackburn do a pretty good job. You go in there, man, but it's like a jail. And we expect, and I remember when I was told and put a label on me, "Bad behavior, bad this." Every school I went into, I lived up to it. You told me that's what I was and that's what I became. What we have to do is, is this money, start putting it upstream. Even with these kids, one place? And I deal with them all the time. They're like, "Man, you know, all my ops are here." Another thing I wanna leave you guys with, we have to get tough and, and that's upstream again with legislative part. You guys gotta hammer it away and I'll tell you why. Again, back to the broke down families. You got elders that's encouraging these kids to what quote-unquote, "Put in work", to do the dirty work because they say you guys won't hold them accountable. They say we're not holding them accountable. So we gotta find a peaceful balance, a peaceful medium where we're holding our kids accountable, but at the same time, we have the resources out there for them. That's the poor reason what, that's the part I, I have a problem with. The resources out there. If you're gonna slam the kids?
One minute.
Then let's do it with a good conscience saying, "You had opportunities out here." That's why it's hard. We're just looking at it from a breach of law. We're not seeing the relationships that are broken. It's time to heal those relationships. If we just think about time and building facilities, we're only looking at the breach of law. That's not helping us out here. We gotta be held accountable. And the way to start doing is you guys gotta hold these kids accountable. We gotta go upstream. These laws got to change, must change where these kids are concerned. That we gotta get tougher. And coming from me, that says a lot. That's my perspective of being around victims, being a perpetrator and a victim. I have a unique perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during this agenda item?
Good afternoon. Feel like we should be ordering in lunch. Jaquela Yarborough, um, CEO of Compete Institute, um, socioeconomic policy and education. Where it's my job to kinda figure out how to find a sweet spot between systems and the people that they serve. Just a few points that I'd like to speak to, um, is I have a problem with the particular language that we use when we talk about we consulted stakeholders. I have not spoken with anyone and I provide monthly meetings and consultation to who you all would probably call stakeholders. And they're all reaching out to me and saying, "Hey, Jaquela, from an international perspective." In case you don't know, I've been to McGill School of International Economics. And so I have a unique perspective on how we solve these little problems that we have in Douglas County. By the way, we don't have a crime problem. We have a poverty problem. You fix poverty, you solve the crime problem. That's easy and simple. I'm gonna start billing y'all for this. So, um, by the way, when I go to these conferences, people do pay me, but I, I show up here because I, I live here. My concern is that I, I feel like we waver between when we follow the law to a T and when we don't follow the law to a T. We're gonna build a new facility using ARPA funds that the treasury is clearly saying is an unauthorized use of these funds. But we have to, for the use of this building that we built, that we don't need, we're saying, "Well, the bond has been very specific, so we can't use the building for anything else." Like a justified need, like a mental health facility for the correction center, which by the way, it happens to be right in front of. So I, I, uh, for me, I, I'm trying to wrap my mind around it as a socioeconomic strategist. I'm looking at just the different needs and, and, and I feel like all of the resources that we need are right here in this room. Like, I feel like we have brilliant minds. All of you guys are amazing. The people that come up are amazing. And we're just offering these resources, but it seems like it's largely contingent upon some force that is, that maybe I'm missing, that is, that is not in this room. Uh, we're, we're beholden to, we're married to this idea that we have to put kids in this facility, but that, by the way, we have a hundred and forty beds. So we have a hundred and forty beds, which by the way, the, the youth center passes a full-on inspection every year. Usually it's like in September and I get a copy of it. So I, I don't see anything that's wrong unless anybody can point it out to me what is wrong with the current facility. Of course, we've been saying the same thing for the past four or five, maybe six years. But my concern is, I don't do all the political stuff. I don't like the politics. What I'm looking at is the families who are impacted. Because we're consider, we're singing the same song. We can bankrupt this county and we're still gonna have the same problems. Because we are not starting with programming. We're not putting the money where it's supposed to go. So we're building buildings, okay, but what kind of programs and structures are gonna be in those buildings? We're gonna fund the bridge network that's supposed to be delegating where these funds go as far as programming goes. And then five years from now, then what? When it fails? Not if, but when. Because we're starting wrong. We're not starting with the asset-based community development that we know works. The asset-based community development is largely informed by a social impact, uh, a report of some kind that's usually done at the very start of a project. We don't have anything that tells us that what we want to do is gonna be successful. I don't see anything yet. I don't really care about arguing in buildings. I'm never gonna own it. I'm not gonna make any money off of it. You can build fifteen buildings. We're gonna end up paying for it anyway. But what I'm hoping to appeal to is how do we, we're hearing these parents come in. We're hearing the community come in. All of these people have an interest and they should be considered the experts and the stakeholders. How are these peoples consider, their ideas being taken into consideration? These, if you wanna have a meeting and you wanna figure out how to do this, right? You employ the folks who show up here consistently, who, by the way, we do research. We meet over coffee. We, we have these conversations. We're, we're meeting with, uh, the different mental health facilities. We're meeting with the individuals who may or may not be in our families or in our communities. We're actually housing and feeding individuals. We're doing the community work. So we have this qualitative data, which by the way, is largely missing. I haven't seen any piece of qualitative data that substantiates any of the spending that we're suggesting in these meetings. Those aren't any of the talking points I was gonna say, but I went there. So we're talking about, we have a hundred and forty beds at the current youth facility. I don't under, I still don't just, I don't see a need justified for having ser- more serious offenders justified in a separate place from the other. If you only have eighty-nine kids, right? I'm not gonna build a new house because I got my sister's kids coming over and they might be a little bit more poorly behaved than my kids. Um, I realize that that is minimizing this considerably, but I'm just thinking financially, as a taxpayer, why the need, why are we married to this idea that we have to utilize this facility? That there's no data to support that we actually need. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the item? There is a motion in a second.
Nicole Claire, R, Omaha. Um, my questions are, what, what has changed from the last vote we're hearing about this meeting? I'm, I'm curious, who were the stakeholders and details of that? Trick or treat? No treats, just tricks. Anyway, respectfully, the taxpayers, um, paid for this, uh, are, are gonna continue to pay for it, but many without knowing about this and com- completely understanding what was occurring and definitely without a vote, a vote from them. The Juvenile Justice Center fiasco, as it's been called, AKA the Downtown Kids Jail, continues to be well a fiasco. The debate has been to keep the current Douglas County Youth Center open, actually open the thirty-some million Downtown Kids Jail, formerly now called the Douglas County Youth and Family Support Center. Total project cost over a hundred and thirty-two million, largest fiscal expenditure in Douglas County history, without a vote of the people, which now only can be allowed to hold fifty-two kids and continues to be delayed in its opening because it does not meet standard jail requirements. Um, keeping both locations open, plus all the satellite locations, by the way, not co-located at all, which was one of the very important selling points on the downtown location and building. Please take note, it was reported just five days ago that four juveniles escaped one of your saving graces, um, radius. And I just wanna briefly say why they were there. Uh, one carried a concealed weapon and has been accused of shoplifting. Outstanding juvenile warrant, numerous runaway reports. Another is history of criminal activity involving guns, theft, vehicle theft and drugs. Another, um, assault and theft and is thought to carry a stolen gun. Also has an outstanding juvenile warrant. And another has carried a weapon in the past, history of vehicle theft and assault and extending juvenile warrants. I'll hand that in. Again, you know, uh, radius is not secure. It's a Sherwood Foundation project costing over twenty-five million for twenty-four beds, over one million per bed. It is not a secure facility. Um, I also have this article. My main view on all this is when are the people actually going to count and matter? When? There's a small group of little people that seem to keep transferring There's a small group of little people that seem to keep transferring the same dollar bill, 1 million dollars, between each other, while the people who really need help and assistance stand outside the circle and watch. Commissioner Kavanaugh has never been in favor of the Downtown Kids Jail, never. He has not wavered on this, even after it's been built. If anything, he believes it's even more. There it stands, empty, may never open. Kids are being sent all over the city, CSI, Omaha Home for Boys, Radius. And Home, Home is the big program. Home, unfortunately for most of these kids and their possible victims, is not working. The latest shootings in North Omaha with the two members of one family being murdered. We hear from Councilwoman Johnson, eventually from the Chief of Police and the Mayor, and from Amber Wood. But you know who we didn't hear from? Who's been looking down most of the meeting is Commissioner Chris Rogers. This is your district. This is your subject. And we didn't hear from Borgeson. We've been hearing how you've been working on it for 20 years. So, there's just a lot of questions. I know it's a concern about having people in the same location of higher crimes versus lower crimes. And that does need to be divided. We wanted to spend money on the building at 42nd Street. We wanted to rehab that building. At no point did the group of us want to not spend money and time on that building. It is rumored that Brad Alexander is leaving, we're very sorry to hear that, if that's true. In my opinion, you have gagged him and pushed him out and replaced him with a talking head funded and guided by Sherwood and Kim Avicati. Dr. Abby Carba has shown up with data, it's convoluted data, and she's not with the kids, unlike Brad. Anyway, I think that's all, I think I said enough. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trying to make these, make it concise and state the points of where we're at. I think for the years, there's been this perception that people were trying to have this project to close down 42nd Street and have the other one open. I think the goal was never to close, totally close 42nd Street. The goal was to make it available to be able to have another level of service that's needed to be able to address the issue of the kids. I think people are saying that there needs to be accountability in some respects, and I agree, I think everybody agrees. But when you talk about what the issue is there, the issue really gets down to one thing. And it is length of stay. And when we're saying accountability, I think then that's fine. We need to make sure we hold accountability on a lot of ends. I agree with my colleagues that are saying, they've heard from stakeholders and people around the system saying that if the other building was open, it would be good because that building would make it better to be able to see the kids in a faster rate. Now, this is what I mean when I'm saying accountability. I agree. This is the compromise to get us there to start that process. But since you're saying you want the kids there, and I agree, then I am saying to you publicly, the accountability piece needs to be there where kids are not sitting in that facility for 45 to 90 days. Kids that don't need to be there, that is what the data said. And when somebody's saying data's not talking, now it's talking, that's what it is. It says that's what it is and that's what the process needs to happen to make that go. There's a report, and if people are talking about accountability, I encourage you to go look at this report, it's a public report. It was put out for public comment. Report is called "The Juvenile Justice Enhancement: Nebraska Probation Review." It talks about a study that they brought a well-respected guy in to look at things, to see what need to be approved. And I commend probation for doing that. But that urgency needs to be ramped up. I mean, we got, you know, people talking all kind of things about, we don't care for the kids and accountability. Let me state right out the box that people are saying like, you know, crime is running rampant. That is an absolute lie. I sit in a meeting over on 52nd and some of the people here spoke and sit in that meeting. And I sit in that meeting for 12, last 12 weeks. There's been two incidences of juvenile incidents. So, two incidents, I mean, you walk in there and there's days where there's not even guns fired for the week. So, when you talk about a crisis or other things of that degree, Chicago has a crisis. Kansas City has a crisis. We have issues that can manage and unfortunately, no city can get away with just being that clean where they don't have any incidences. So, you know, I say today for all those people that are saying that, yeah, it's a little setback and slow, but I don't think it's totally because we're not on the right trail. I mean, the trail says you need alternatives. And again, when you talk about alternatives and holding accountable, I'm gonna urge, kids can't be sitting in there 45 to 90 days. And the people that are accountable are gonna have to be probation, are gonna have to be the courts to move them. I mean, people talk about public safety, that is true. But there's data that says, hey, public safety on this end means kids that aren't supposed to sit in the facility, should not sit in that facility because they have a chance of coming out in more danger and worse than they were. People wanna go to the legislature, I agree, you should go to the legislature. But you shouldn't be going to the legislature to say, you know, they need to be locked up. You need to be going to the legislature for more resources to put that kid in a proper space. That is what's proven all over to make that better. We can disagree on some things, and I think the spirit, most people want to do what's best for them, but it's just what's said here a couple of times, you can't build your way out of it. You absolutely cannot build your way out of it. So, I support what today's doing because it puts us on the trail to one, hold those ends accountable, you wanted it, you're gonna get it. I want those kids to go to move, but that part of the system has to hold up and do what it says it's gonna do. So, those kids can get the services and then we can have ourselves in a position to develop the next degree of service to prevent things from happening. Thank you.
There is a hand, Quality Care?
Hi, and thank you, Commissioner. My name's Tisa Tapari, I am the owner of Quality Care Preference, a 12-bed therapeutic group home in North Omaha, who has actually been approved with not one, two, or three programs by the Nebraska Judicial Courts, probation and parole. I have six programs. And then I have a number of adult programs that are all approved at this point. So, when we talk about not holding kids in where they don't need to be held and putting them in proper spaces, I'm running into issues with probation and parole, not wanting to send referrals because they don't wanna foot the bill. And that's fine and dandy. You know, they want Medicaid to take care of the therapeutic services, or they want this or that. And when we talk about the kids' lives, so I am one of those kids. I'm an adult offender. I broke the law. I am, I was, I was a convicted felon. Today I stand before you as a PhD candidate for ISU. So, when it comes to reform, if we can catch those non-violent kids who are just on the wrong path and put them in proper spaces, as Commissioner Rogers spoke of, without all the red tape and not fighting about who's gonna pay what, I mean, even though it's important, but the taxpayer dollars are going to just hold these kids stagnated. And we all know that when you're stagnated, developmental processes aren't growing, they're not developing. Their mind frame, their cognitions are not growing. So, I wanna know, what can we do to get some of those referrals into the community, into this house, into these programs which are approved? And there's actually more than that. There's therapeutic group home, there's the emergency shelter. There's all things good for these kids that's not being utilized, but we're, you know, in the community right now. Right now. So, I would like, you know, you guys make the decisions. Have the final vote on what's gonna happen. I'm wondering why it's probation and parole, not utilizing the services due to certain Medicaid because they don't wanna foot the bill, period. All right, thank you a lot tonight, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to speak on this again.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? We do have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Well, the minutes will reflect Commissioner Kavanaugh's voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Next. Human Resources, the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. No legislative items at this time, we do have need for an executive session for litigation, contract and union negotiations, and security. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those stated purposes? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero. Motion passes seven to zero.